Okay, good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started here in just a minute. We just have to wait for Supervisor Wegant to make his way up here for his last board So, good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. We are going to start today with a flag salute led by Supervisor Robert Wegant.
My flag salute is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all and welcome, everybody. It's great to see everyone here this morning and such a good turnout for today. We will go to our first item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda, and I believe we want to pull item 16J. Are there any other items that board members would like to request?
No.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us on any items on the consent calendar?
We have one, Chair.
We have one on Zoom. Michael, would you like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Good morning, Supervisors. Mike Garabedian, yes. Item 16H on all of the fees.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
That motion should also include 16K and 21.1 from the supplemental agenda.
Oh, thank you for that reminder.
That was 16K and 21.1, which were both on the supplemental agenda.
Supervisors Holmes and Gore, all those in -- oh, this is a roll call. So, Megan, will you do the honors? Gore?
Aye.
Wegant?
Yo.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson? Aye. Okay, with that, we'll move to 16H. Mr. Garabedian, you had some comments to make on this item? Mr. Garabedian, did you want to make your comments?
Oh, I just unmuted myself again for the second time. Yes, I'm opposed to this item. I oppose to the way it's handled, where you lump all of these different fees together, fees such as the traffic fees that are a challenge to the voters who turned down Measure M to increase the sales tax back in 2016. And the -- everybody, many people end up paying these fees for all kinds of things. And I think it's notable that the California Municipal Financing Agency has, up to now, half a billion dollars in approved bonding for Bickford Ranch, and that's isn't even for the whole project. So, the public pays one way or the other and quite concerned about this. I think this should be a regular agenda item, and each of the fees should be handled with an opportunity for the public to speak and address it. But I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you and good morning.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Are there any other comments on this item? Would you like to address the item and clarify anything?
Good morning, Chair Gustafson and members of the board. I'm Gina Olivares, Management Analyst for your County Executive Office. The item for your consideration today is adoption of a resolution to accept the Development Impact Fee Annual Report for fiscal year 2122. This report contains annual findings per our Government Code 66,000. These fees are collected to meet the needs of increased service demands generated by new development. Government Code 66,000 requires the findings to be made no later than 180 days after the close of the fiscal year, and the report provides a recording of the beginning balance of each fee program, the amount of fees collected during the fiscal year, the ending balance, and the approximate start date of projects funded by these fees. This county executive office -- I'm sorry, the county executive office will bring separately the five-year reporting for the fee programs that meet the requirements.
Thank you. And the reason for putting them together, which is what Mr. Garabedian was suggesting, was for expediency as well as transparency, so they don't come one at a time and people don't see that cumulative. But the board then considers it in a cumulative manner. Okay. Great. Thank you, Gina. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
Move approval.
Yes? We already asked for public comment.
Move approval.
Okay. Supervisor Wegant, Supervisor Holmes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, 16J. Supervisor Jones?
16J. Hi, Kate. Good morning. Good morning. So, my questions, I have a number of questions. I know some employees are hired under, were hired under Range A and some hired under Range B. And I, can you explain to me, because I really had to kind of put two and two together since I've been employed here, was, what's the difference?
Thank you for the question, Supervisor Jones. For the record, I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. The difference between Range A and Range B is that Range A consists of five salary steps, step one through five. There's approximately 5% difference between each. Range B consists of 10 salary steps in the range. The range begins and ends at approximately the same place as A, but there's approximately 2.5% between each of the 10 steps. And Range B applies to newer employees joining the county since about 2019, I believe.
Okay, so anyone hired after that date on 2019 gets hired under the Range B with 10 steps?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is there a policy for determining a new district director's salary?
Your county code determines how new employees are treated when it comes to salary. The code requires that new employees are placed initially at step one, although your code also gives authority to the CEO to approve hiring a new employee and an advanced step in the range with a number of different considerations, including the labor market, recruiting needs, and the qualifications of the applicant.
Okay. So, are there higher degrees required or higher education, master's degrees, PhDs, anything like that, in order to qualify for an initial employee to be hired at a step greater than one?
Not required. Those types of degrees can certainly be considered, but not required.
Okay. So, I've heard that, you know, Placer County is having a lot of trouble filling vacant positions. And so, particularly, I know Cedras having trouble finding engineers, civil engineers, environmental, electrical, architects, code enforcement, even the DSA and the DA has trouble hiring people. So, all of those are jobs that require higher education, certifications, state licensing, and things like that. So, is it a pattern of practice for Placer County to start or offer new employees in those fields to start at Range 9? I mean, at step 9 in Range B?
Supervisor Jones, I don't think I would say it's a pattern of practice to begin new employees at step 9. I will say, particularly in the current labor market, it appears there have been an influx in requests for an advanced step, meaning something other than one could be all the way up through 10.
So, recently, are we starting new employees out at, other than step 1?
It does happen with regularity.
Okay. Okay. And I know one of the restrictions that, with the new Range B, is that once you hire them in, you cannot skip steps.
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. So, my question is, in, we're being asked to approve our newest district director to start this person out at step 9 out of 10 steps. Are there requirements to justify being hired at a step 9 when you're a new employee?
Your code authorizes your CEO to consider any approval of any step up to 10. And as I mentioned, the code specifies considerations may be the labor market, recruiting needs, or education and experience. By extension, your board has the authority to approve a new hire at an advanced step based on your determinations of those factors.
So, when we all come on as a new supervisor and we sit with you, do you instruct us that we do not have to start our district directors at step 1? Because I wasn't given that guidance.
I wish I could respond to that question, Supervisor Jones. Until recently, it's my understanding that your former chief of staff provided that sort of onboarding and handled all of the district director contracts. Certainly, if that's something your board would like HR to do, we'd be happy to participate in that process.
Well, it might be nice if people like me, when we come on new, that we are not required, as this gives the impression, our code says that for new employees, step 1 will normally be paid upon initial employment. Step 2 will normally be paid upon completion of one year. Step 3 will be paid upon completion of the next year. So, what do the steps mean? Are they equivalent to one year of experience? Since we're promoting after a full year?
Typically, when an employee begins, well, at any step, as you mentioned, after 2,080 hours of service, they're eligible for movement to the next step. So, one way to look at a request for an advanced step placement is years of experience, although there are other factors that can be considered as well.
Okay. Because I believe that all of us started our district directors out at a step 1.
It's definitely the norm for district directors to begin at step 1. There have been rare exceptions.
Okay. So, is there a rare exception or purpose for starting a new district director out at step 9?
That is the request received, so I would look to District 2 to share thoughts about how they determine the qualifications warranted that placement.
Okay. Because I know all of our district directors, Bonnie, yours came from serving under a state senator. Cindy, yours came from serving under legislator. And Jim's, yours came to us after 11 years of service for the county. And they all started, we all started them at a step 1. I'm just having a little issue with starting a brand-new district director at a step 9. I think Shanti was started at, your district director was started out at step 1. Okay. Okay. So, here's the deal. With all of the issues that we've had with filling vacancies in Placer County, that's all we've heard from everyone, is that we're having difficulty filling positions. We can't find people to take our jobs or anything else. So, is it now we have to set a precedent where we have to offer all new employees a step 9? This is damaging to the other district directors, seriously, to think that they were not worthy of anything other than a step 1 when they started. So, I do, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I do have an issue with this. I think it's excessive. There is nothing required for advanced degrees, no state licensing, no certifications or anything like that. But that is my opinion, and that and six bucks will get you a cup of coffee at Starbucks, right? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concern over that.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Wegant?
Yeah, I don't know if you had a question on me, Suzanne, but I'll provide some perspective for anybody who cares, and that this is my last meeting and I'm leaving, so.
He's going to say that a few times today.
Yeah, I probably will. So, first of all, when I came here in a different era, there weren't any district directors. Some of us who were here actually talked to the county exec at creating that position. And it was in the face of, back then, our pay was also extremely low, set by a vote of the community, and so we needed help to get the job done. It's gotten busier and busier and busier. And I just did some brief calculations this morning, so it may or may not be accurate. But if you try to look at comparable counties, which is one of my soapbox things, my view is Sonoma County is a very comparable county in terms of the workload for the board members and the issues that are going on in their county with managing growth and open space and all the other functions that we have to provide. Board of Supervisors here makes about half of their salary. San Luis Obispo County, which I think is somewhat comparable, but not nearly as busy, they make about 10% more than we make. Santa Barbara County, which I think is fairly comparable county for board members, we make about 75% of what they make, or about 25% less, which cries out, in my view, for having staffs that can help us sort of extend our, the time that we have available to do the job, if in fact, we're going to be responsive to our constituents, which I think is essential in local government particularly. So, what I do recall, when Shanti came to work with me, is that we agreed upon a six-month contract, because I figured anybody could tolerate me for six months, and I didn't know what would happen after that. But that was turned over to our staff at the time. I didn't get involved in those issues, so I don't have any idea, actually, what Shanti made. But I do know, in light of my prior comments, she's taken about a 12.5% pay cut to become county supervisor. So, voters, I think, should pay attention to those kinds of things, because at the end of the day, the talent that we attract is really just based on the market. We have to pay market wages to be able to get the brightest and the best. And Jane, something you might think about is, in the early days here, our county exec had a philosophy of trying to have a higher pay scale so that we could have the best and the brightest in our staff. But we also tended to have few employees per capita for our population as compared to most county governments, and I think that has served us really well. If you think about the recognized programs that we have in Placer County, I think across the board, that strategy has borne us out. So, all of that is by way of, Shanti, obviously, is coming to the Board of Supervisors, not quite soon enough for my taste, but, and she needs to have a district director, and she negotiated a contract with someone that she's comfortable with. And I think we simply need to pay what that market demands. And I believe that that person is about midpoint in the pay for our current district directors. So, in the future, I think board members will be trying to attract that kind of talent, but they're just going to simply have to negotiate market salaries for the appropriate people that can work with them and fulfill the skill fits that they need to do the job. That was a long-winded response, but I feel a lot better. So, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wegant. Supervisor Gore?
Thank you. And Supervisor Jones, I appreciate your comments. And certainly, I know I was a little surprised that it was a higher level, but to your point, it is a challenge to attract good employees. This future employee, if we approve the contract, has a great deal of experience, contacts in the community, and can probably hit the ground running. And I think this gives us, as an opportunity, as we're looking at what our staffing models look like, and we've been having conversations about what the board's staffing models look like, it gives us an opportunity to talk about that. So, I'm supportive of moving forward with this contract as it is.
Okay. Yes, Supervisor Jones, did you want to make another comment?
Yes, I would agree with that, had it been made clearly known to all of us, because you're right, it is hard to find good employees. But all of our staff, all of our district directors come with a great deal of experience. I mean, 30, 35 years of experience, but they were started out at step 1s. Okay? There was no, I wasn't given any of these things to work with. And yes, I did have to hire somebody that hit the ground running. I know several of our district directors who work more than 45 hours a week. They don't get any overtime. They don't get any extra pay. All they get is their step. And so, that's why I say, if, let's have a fair playing ground for all employees, all new employees, for all of you out there that are going to be hiring new employees. You know, if that's all it takes, is just compare what they've got and the experience they've got, and then, you know, you too can offer them a step 9. Anyway, I just think as stewards of taxpayer dollars, we have to be much more prudent than that. And I know it's hard to say, I don't mean to say everybody needs to start at a step 1, but don't have all of us starting our people at a step 1, and then all of a sudden the rules change a couple of years down the road. Anyway, I've said my piece, and thank you all.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Supervisor Gore made, because not everybody in the public, and we have quite a few members of the public here today, know that we've been working on our governance manual. And one of the items that we had agendized for that was to really talk about our Board of Supervisors budget in general and go through those equity issues, whether it's our field offices, some of us are in county buildings, others have leased space, whether it's meeting, training, and travel, whether it's these salaries, there's a whole lot that goes into that. And we should be transparent to the public. I think we all agree with that, and that's why these items are on the agenda. And we don't see all of the other items regularly posted on that agenda. So, I think it's important to have that full budget discussion and to be accountable to our other employees, to our taxpayers, to see that budget and how we've allocated. And it will vary, office to office. There are some offices that need a field office, others have chosen not to, others have different staffing-level needs. And so, I think that's the beauty of trying to create that equity in our budget and transparency for our public. So, I'm looking forward to those discussions coming up as well. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, looking at our staff, they do an exceptional job. Many, many people work side by side who are in A or B and get differing benefits, got hired at different times, and that's an equity issue that we can't address fully, but we can always give people hope they can move up. By starting higher, they have less room to grow at this point as well. So, now, let's open this up to public comment.
I just want to make one more comment, too, about the new step B. What the step B does is it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you start out, whatever step you start out, and after every year, then you automatically take the next step up. But once you're hired into, whatever step you're hired into, you cannot skip a step, no matter how good you are, whether it's the district attorney's office that needs good attorneys, or whether it's our county council who has good attorneys that they're trying to keep from being clipped by the, you know, the civilian sector. We cannot skip any steps for our current, our current.
Part of, that's correct. Correct?
Yes, that is our current rule, based on CalPERS regulations, and something that we continue to look at for other options, but you're absolutely correct. That is how it currently works.
And all of our labor groups have talked about this challenge and have made it very clear to all of us, and we're living with it as well, with our staff. And I think that's why we've been talking about, what are the staffing needs we have for the board office? What are the levels of those employees and what we need to do in a comprehensive way? Because through changes in promotions or in differentiating some of those tasks, that can also be of great assistance. Thank you, Kate. And then we want to open this up to the public for any comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Shanti Landon, kind of in limbo with my title, District Director for Supervisor Wegant, also, I guess, supervisory elect.
I prefer supervisor-elect, that's my.
And I also, just a personal goal of mine, to create controversy before I'm even sworn in. So, here we are. I just, I had a couple of comments that I just wanted to share, and I think there are two separate issues here. There's the issue or the conversation around compensation for district directors and all county employees. And there's the question, which is on your agenda, which is the salary for a district director. And when I went out for recruitment for my district director, I had the conversation with this person, knowing that she was being approached by multiple other elected offices because she is, in my opinion, of high value. She is a person of integrity, which is first and foremost important to me. She is loyal. She is well-connected in the community. She's been serving in the Assembly for more than six years. She has much to offer as a district director, not just for me as a supervisor, but I believe for the whole county. And I knew to recruit her, she would need to get paid a comparable salary to what she was getting, because I could not ask her, at her qualifications, to take a pay cut to come work for me. And so, I share your sentiment and your concerns, because I knew going into this that this would likely, I did not want it to be an affront on other district directors. And as Supervisor Wegant mentioned, she does fall right in the middle of the five supervisor, I mean, of the five district directors, I apologize. There are two that will be compensated more than her and two that will be compensated less than her. And I, once again, I believe she has the qualifications, and I value what she can bring to the table. And so, it was definitely not a personal affront. It was really more of, I needed to recruit this person, because I truly believe she is the best person for the job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shanti. Are there any other public comments on this item? We have one on Zoom, Chair. Okay. Michael, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Mr. Garabedian, we see your hand up. Did you want to make comment? It looks like you put your hand back down. Megan?
There seems to be an issue on his end.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make one more comment, because at our last board meeting of December 6th, we approved the contracts for the following district directors. District 1, we approved step 5. District 3, we approved step 5. District 4, we approved step 3. And District 5, we approved step 3. So, I'm just correcting, I'm not sure how you're saying, that two are paid more and two are paid less.
So, I'm looking at the hourly rate of what they're getting paid, not the step, because there are some that are in Range A and some that are in Range B. So, if you look at the hourly rate, she falls in between the five.
Yeah.
And one other thing I forgot to mention is, no one actually told me that she could be at a higher rate. I just knew what she needed, and I reached out to HR and asked, is this a possibility? And was told that, yes, with board's approval and CEO approval, that this is a possibility. So, it wasn't like someone sat down with me and said, hey, you know, you can, you can get a higher rate. So, just so that you're aware.
Yes. Well, we all struck with the same issues of finding somebody qualified to fulfill all those needs of ours, as far as confidentiality goes and, you know, hitting the ground running and everything. But, so, I just, I just think step 9 is excessive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move forward and make a motion to approve item 16J. Supervisor Gore and Supervisor Wegant on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstained.
And one abstention. Thank you. Okay, with that, now is our time for public comment. And this is for items that are not on our agenda, and I would invite anyone who would like to provide comment on an item not on our agenda, come up, and you have three minutes to address the board. And please understand, we cannot take action today, but we can hear your comments.
Of course. Jennifer White, Placer County, just some more updates from around the world and things that may be affecting our community at some point. Up in Canada right now, they're doing assisted suicide for children as young as 12 years old, and the parents don't have to know that they've signed up for this or have been approved. If you go against the COVID narrative in Canada right now, in some of the provenances, they are actually recommending psychological evaluations and medication for depression and even up to sedation to try to fix you into believing in getting a shot that you may not want. Right now, in New Zealand, a boy was born with a heart issue. Right now, in New Zealand, a boy was born with a heart issue. The family needs to get surgery for the son. They're unvaccinated. They want their child to have unvaccinated blood for the surgery, because he has a heart issue. We've all seen a lot of myocarditis, pericarditis, coming up with these shots. This can be transferred in from the blood into this child. So the New Zealand government said, they had an injunction placed from the hospital saying, you're not taking care of your son, you need to use this blood. The court approved that they have to use the vaccinated blood. The parents said no, and they went through, the hospital went through with the judge again, and now the child's been taken away from the parents, and has to use the vaccinated blood to have this surgery. So this brings up something that I don't think a lot of people are aware of here in California. Our blood banks, all the blood is mixed together. So if you are unvaccinated, or you're choosing not to continue with boosters and stuff, if you have a transfusion, you can get vaccinated blood put into your body. Now, some people who have been vaccinated only want certain companies because of certain side effects, or not trying to get side effects. So I think it's really important that maybe Placer County starts thinking about doing a second unvaxxed blood bank for people who don't want to actually continue to reinfect their blood with whatever's in these vaccines. So maybe something next year to look into. Europe has about fourteen unvaccinated blood banks, and I don't believe there are any here in the States at this time. And I do think this will become an issue as time progresses. And thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. Good morning, Richard.
Good morning. My name's Richard Lingan-Joe. I'm the owner of Thorium Electric. I'm a builder. My formal education's in finance and economics, and I'm, as I mentioned before, extremely interested in the update of the general plan. And what I'd like to see, of course, is a designated area in the general plan to build my mold and salt reactor. In pursuing that, I must say that the staff, your staff, has been very helpful in providing me with a list, and updating that list of public hearings on the new general plan. So I want to thank them for doing that. And as always, I will reject any government funding, so I'm not looking for any funding. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Richard. Are there other members of the public here in the room? Are there any members online that would like to, members of the public online? Okay, then we'll close public comment, we'll go to board member and county executive reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Supervisor Gore, you had a board member report?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I wanted to let you all know, and good, please come sit down, we have plenty of seats up in the front, for those of you who would like to sit down for a moment. A couple of things. First of all, the Western Placer Waste Management Board Authority, where Supervisor Wiegand and I sit on that, I wanted to let you all know that the board did adopt our Renewable Placer Waste Action Plan final EIR, and then also accepted Concept Two for that waste management plan. So that went forward. Thank you for all your hard work on that item, I appreciate it. The second thing is that we have wreaths across America taking place this Saturday in Roseville, the Roseville Cemetery. It is at 12:00 PM. There might be one at the Auburn Cemetery as well, but that's an opportunity where we can place wreaths on the graves of veterans who have served us. And speaking of the Roseville Cemetery, I wanted to personally acknowledge the director, actually, I think he's the CEO, but the director of the Roseville Cemetery who's joining us today, Kelly Erman. He is with his wife, Chris, and daughter, Sarah. Kelly has served the Roseville Cemetery Board since 1998. He started, served at the ground level, and worked his way up. He has done such an amazing job of serving our residents in Roseville, taking care of the cemetery, making sure that clients gotten taken care of. He oversaw the new administration building that was built, as well as the wonderful Gold Star Monument. He's just done an excellent job, and even things like the wreath across America, and that was something he participated in. So Kelly, just on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the residents of Placer County and the city of Roseville, we thank you so much for all of your service. You've done a great job, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you, Kelly.
Supervisor, thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the wreath across America. There'll be ceremonies at the Auburn Cemetery, and also, for the first time, at the Newcastle Cemetery on Saturday.
Great. Any other board member reports? I'll just give a quick one. Tomorrow, at the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Board, we'll be hearing the requests from Placer County at the, what's called the ARPIC Committee, the Regional Plan Implementation Committee. I serve on that, is one of my committee assignments on that board. And that's received quite a bit of controversy in the community. The Planning Commission took public input, but did not take action. We had, they had made a recommendation not to take any action, and to hear the public comment and come back. And I believe staff is expecting quite a bit of public testimony tomorrow as well at TRPA. So I'll give you an update in our January meeting as to where that's headed after tomorrow's meeting. And I believe that wreath in Auburn is at 9:00 AM here at the Auburn Cemetery. So with that, county exec, Jane, did you have a report? Okay. Then we'll move on to our 9:30 timed item, just a few minutes late this morning, for such an important time, to commemorate such an important person in our county legacy. And this is a resolution commending Placer County Treasurer, Tax Collector, Janine Windenhousen. And so with that, Supervisor Holmes, do you want to read the resolution into the record first?
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you for giving me the honor of reading this to Janine. So hang in there, folks, it's gonna take a little while. Whereas, Janine Windenhousen is retiring on December 31st, 2022, after more than thirty-five years in the Treasurer, Tax Collector's office. And whereas, Janine was hired on July 27th, 1987, as the Placer County Treasurer, Tax Collector's first investment officer. And whereas, Janine was promoted to Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector in 1992. And whereas, in June 1993, Janine was unanimously appointed to be Treasurer, Tax Collector by the Board of Supervisors to complete the term of her predecessor during, beginning on November 1st, 1993. Whereas, Janine won her first election in June 1994 by a two-to-one margin. And whereas, Janine went on to win re-elections six more times, serving the people of Placer County as Treasurer, Tax Collector continuously for more than twenty-nine years. And whereas, after the Treasury's investment portfolio suffered a 20% loss in market value, and had no liquidity, Janine was hired as the new investment officer to provide professional management of the Treasurer's investment portfolio, and with her adept and discreet financial management of the distressed portfolio, catastrophic losses and potential bankruptcy were avoided. And whereas, Janine went on to gain a reputation for successfully managing a variety of crises affecting Placer County Treasurer, Tax Collector's office, as the shutdown of the banking system after the Loma Perrita earthquake, asbestos contamination, and emergency evacuation of the Treasurer, Tax Collector's office, and more recently, the operation of the office during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Janine has been responsible for the custody and investment of money on deposit in the Placer County Treasurer, which deposits have grown from 100 million in 1987 to 2 billion in 2022. And whereas, though Janine's prudent management of public funds, the Placer County Treasurer has consistently been one of the highest-earning Treasurers in the state of California, providing $698 million of additional revenues, and therefore, providing increased services to the people of Placer County from investment earnings during her management of the Treasurer Investment Portfolio. And whereas, Janine has consistently maintained relations and represented the county with the major rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, Moody Investor Services, on behalf of Placer County, and has played a major role in the upgrade and maintenance of Placer County's double A-plus credit rating, resulting in Placer County being one of the highest-rated counties in the state. And whereas, Janine gained a reputation for bringing creative financial solutions, and innovative and entrepreneurial programs and services to the residents and businesses of Placer County. And whereas, Janine has over thirty years of experience in government, financial planning, municipal debt structuring, and public funds investing, and frequently has been called upon to provide diplomacy and financial expertise in interagency and public-private negotiations. She has gained a national and statewide reputation for her special expertise in creating and implementing innovative public financing solutions for unique municipal programs and projects. And whereas, Janine has led every issuance of debt for Placer County since 1987, including capital projects for the Larry Auto Finance Administration Building, the Community Development Resource Agency Building, the South Placer Justice Center, the Auburn Justice Center, the Health and Human Services Building. And whereas, Janine led financing for the Dry Creek Community Facilities District, the Placer Corporate Center Assessment District, Riola Vineyards Community Facilities District, and has been involved in financing plans for Bitford Ranch, Placer One, the Sunset Area Plan, and many other small development projects, as well as redevelopment agency bond financing for various economic development projects in the Tahoe and North Auburn areas. And whereas, Janine successfully worked in support of obtaining a $7 million grant from the State Department of Water Resources for the sewer maintenance district number one, to the Lincoln Treatment Plant. And whereas, Janine has subscribed to a principle of investing in Main Street over Wall Street, and thereby developed and utilized an innovative municipal financing model, investing local taxpayer dollars to provide cost-effective financing for local governments in Placer County, ultimately saving taxpayer money, while also providing immediate benefits to the local economy. Projects financed through this innovative financing model include financing provided for the 224-megawatt American River Middle Fork hydroelectric project, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission relicensing costs, and capital improvements. This innovative financing structure is estimated to save Placer County and Placer County Water Agency more than $30 million. Additionally, Janine has used this financing model to save taxpayer money by helping to finance the purchase of school buses for the Mid Placer School Bus Transportation Agency, a helicopter for the Placer County Sheriff's Office, a bridge financing for the City of Colfax Sewer Treatment Plant, a Town of Loomis Public Works Project, and the interim financing for a Rockland Unified School District Construction Project. And whereas, Janine has, with the support of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, Janine developed, proposed, implemented, and administered the M-Power PACE Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program, which provided over $110 million in financing for energy efficiency and distributed electric generation for residents and commercial property owners in Placer and Nevada Counties, and the city of Folsom. And whereas, with the support of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, Janine developed, proposed, implemented, and administered Pioneer Community Energy, a community choice aggregate joint powers authority, where she also served as its executive director from 2017 to 2020, during which time she managed a 1.125-gigawatt energy portfolio, saving the electric rate payers in Placer County, Rockland, Lincoln, Auburn, and Colfax, over $20 million in electricity costs. And whereas, Janine has provided testimony at hearings on various bills before the California State Senate and Assembly, and has been called upon to provide technical information by various legislative committees, and to state and federal agencies. And whereas, the White House has directly contacted Janine for technical information regarding PACE financing, and Janine has been a guest at the White House and participated in meetings in the White House Council on Business and Economic Affairs. And whereas, Janine was presented the 2010 Economic Leadership Award by Valley Vision. And whereas, in 2012, Janine was named one of seven women who mean business by the Sacramento Business Journal. And whereas, Janine was presented the Vision Award by the Sierra Business Council on May 1st, 2012. Whereas, on behalf of Placer County, Janine accepted the Bond Buyer's Deal of the Year Award on December 6th, 2018, in New York City, for the first public sale of PACE municipal bonds. Whereas, Janine has been recognized for creating and implementing innovative public finance and energy programs, both nationally and statewide, and has been a frequent speaker on public finance, land-based public financing, including both Assessment District and Melrose Financing, public funds investing, PACE financing, and community choice aggregation for the State Treasurer's Office, California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, the Bond Buyer's Annual National Conference, the California Association of County Treasurer, Tax Collectors, the California Municipal Taxpayers Association, the University of California Davis Extension Program, the University of California, Los Angeles Public Policy Program, the California Bankers Association, the Placer County Board of Realtors and Sacramento Real Estate Women, the U.S. Building Council, the U.S. Green Building Council, Los Angeles Chapter, the Northern California Power Agency Annual Conference. Whereas, Janine has served the people of Placer County beyond county government by serving on many local boards, clubs, and committees, including the Board of the Placer County Chapter of the United Way, the Auburn Rotary Club, the Western State Trail Foundation, the Loomis Basin Education Foundation, where she conceived and developed the Mandarin Run, which brings over 300 runners annually to Placer County during Mandarin season, and has been active in many other community organizations and activities. Whereas, as an active member of the community, and the Rotary Club of Auburn, Janine was honored as a Paul Harris Fellow by Rotary Club of Auburn. And whereas, Janine has assisted school districts, fire districts, special districts, with financing, capital projects, and raising revenues to support emergency service. And whereas, Janine has been active member of the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors, and has served on various committees, including Conference Committee, Education Committee, and Legislative Committee. For and, whereas, Janine has demonstrated a sense of professionalism, congeniality, and looked for opportunities to share humor, especially for a good cause such as singing "I Got You Babe" as Sheriff, with Sheriff Ed Bonner as Sonny, and portraying Roseanne Danna as part of the Board of Supervisors in, as part of the annual county picnic, and to raise funds for local charities, and appearing before the Board of Supervisors in 1850's vintage costume to present the board with a county. with the county of firewood purchases for the old courthouse fireplaces and other accounts in the 1850s. Now therefore be it resolved, the Placer County Board of Supervisors commends Janine for her accomplishments and thanks her for her 35 years of dedicated public service to the people of Placer County and wishes her well in retirement, and that's all I have to say about that.
Excuse me. Well, I know there's others who would like to say a few words, so we'll start with the board first. And actually, county council, I think, wanted to start? No?
Oh, well, I didn't want to start, but seeing as you called on me, I will. Janine, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you all these years. I first met Janine actually at Loomis Basin Horsemen's Association annual show. And I think she was actually, if I'm not mistaken, this is her daughter, she was signing her daughter up for classes. So I actually met Janine as the other side of Janine that many of you may not know, but I've gotten to learn about over the years, that for a woman who can make the most intricate and complicated transactions sound like she's giving directions to her home, I sit in awe when she comes up with ways to save the taxpayers money, because she's always been looking for a way to craft financing so that we benefit from it. And that's something that's, I think, rare to find in any organization. And I so appreciate Janine, when I became county council, taking me under her wing and giving me the 101 through 1010 version of financing so that I could at least have just a little kernel of the knowledge that she has. But the one thing I have to say about Janine is, first of all, she has a wicked sense of humor, and she's got a heart of gold. I don't know if you all know this, but I'm going to disclose it. She adopted a U that nobody wanted. She has a goat name, I think, Sugar. And I fully expect in her retirement to see her with her little skipper key at the Westminster Dog Show in the future, because I have no doubt whatever Janine puts her mind to, she accomplishes. But lastly, and probably most importantly, Janine has been a role model for all the young women in this county that strive to reach the top of their profession. She started in a time when that just simply wasn't something that was done. And yet she persevered, she's strong, she's dedicated, she's loyal, and she's showing everyone of the women in this county and in this organization, yes, you can do it. I thank you, Janine.
Thanks, Karen. Supervisor Gore?
Janine, it was the best part of listening to all the whereses was watching your family, and how proud your mom is, and your dad, and your whole family. But I really think that Karen said it well. What a wonderful role model you have been, not only to the women in this community, but to all of us, to show us that you can be innovative and creative and work really hard to do a great job for the residents of this community. You know, not just the county as an entity, but for the residents of our community. And you have been so innovative, and you have worked so hard. And so I just want to say thank you. On behalf of the residents of Placer County, you have gone above and beyond what many elected officials do, and you've done it with a lot of passion and a lot of smarts. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Weigant?
Well, I'm glad I could go early enough, because there's pretty much nothing left to say, and I wanted to, I wanted to say something that hadn't already been said. But I'll reference the resolution because it's such a detailed, incredible array of accomplishments, Janine, that you have afforded the citizens of this county and which we have all benefited from greatly. Some things that people might not know is that I own a piece of art that Janine created, which was auctioned at an art auction. But it's, I forgot the name of it, but it's a fish, of course, since I own it. It's beautiful. It's woven from wool. And there's actually, I think you were on a board that was sort of promoting and researching all of that. And then once we had a chance to ride together in Hidden Falls Park, it was a great day. But professionally, when you came here, you calmed some waters that needed calming from the very beginning. When I came to the board, a couple of years after you had been appointed treasurer, one of our counties in California was financially completely melting down for a range of different reasons, but one of the key things was bad investment management. So you convened a committee proactively to make sure that people understood in Placer County that that wasn't going to happen. And I was privileged to be able to sit on that, and we've worked together on that committee for the last 28 years. Interestingly, some months after you convened that committee, the state made it a mandatory requirement. So way proactive as compared to a lot of other things that were mentioned. And then just professionally, for me, you've just been a great sounding board. You've always been very knowledgeable. Even though I have a background in finance, I didn't have your expertise and skill sets. And so you were helpful with me on a lot of things here at the county. You were always innovative and entrepreneurial. You were the one who came up with the idea that solved a huge problem for us on how to finance the Middle Fork license costs that were about $100 million, and did it in a very unusual and innovative way that was cost-effective. You were great advisors related to perfecting policy out in the Sunset area that would be set aside for jobs creation and not just another large mixed-use area. And now we're reaping huge rewards from all of that. So you have made huge contributions. You've earned a great retirement. Look forward to maybe crossing paths as we both retire. But congratulations, and on behalf of the residents of Placer County, I can't thank you enough.
Supervisor Jones?
Hi, Janine. I hate to see you go. When I came on as a new supervisor only two years ago, you have helped me immensely in so many things. I was appointed to the Pioneer Energy Board, and because of one of your whereses here, with the support of the Board of Supervisors, you developed, proposed, and implemented and administered Pioneer Community Energy, a community choice aggregation joint powers authority. And you also served as the executive director from 2017 to 2020, during which time you managed 1,125 gigawatt energy portfolio. And I don't think anybody can really grasp the magnitude of the responsibility of this, of this committee here, this JPA. And I just want to tell you so much thank you for all your help in trying to help me get my mind around this, because, I mean, I'm a biologist, I'm not, I'm not an electrical energy type person. So I appreciate that. And I also want to tell you thank you for administering the Empower Program. The Empower Program allowed so many homeowners to finance energy-saving upgrades to their homes. The program that you implement, proposed, implemented, administered, provided over $110 million in financing for energy efficiency and distributed electric generation for residential and commercial properties to owners in Placer County. That program was, was wonderful program. It allowed a lot of people to make energy upgrades to their homes and finance them through the county on their, on their tax bills. All of these things that you have done is amazing to me. I thought I knew you. I knew about this much about your history and your background. You're amazing, and I'm so glad everybody had a chance to hear about you and all the amazing things that you've done. The White House? The White House. Anyway, thanks so much for being a great mentor to me. I'm really, really going to miss you, but the best of luck. Best wishes to you always, to you and your family, and your retirement.
Supervisor Holmes, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just have some final comments. Janine, I-
Well, they're not final yet, because there's a lot of folks who want to speak. Your final comments.
No, I've really appreciated your council meeting with you, talking over, you know, difficult issues for me to understand, but you've always explained them to where I have a good grasp of what's asked. I'll never forget about when the Loomis Fire Protection District was about ready to go under, and I stepped in, and you were right there with me to help, and Ed Horton was there as well, help get that, that district on the right path. And finally, we were, they were able to consolidate with South Placer, which was a great, great way to do business. And then one more thing, I don't think I ever thanked you for asking me to serve on the Pioneer Energy Board, but I just have to thank you for that. It's been fun. Congratulations, and I wish you the best. Bye-bye.
County Exec, would you like to make a few remarks?
Good morning, Janine and family. I will be brief, as unlike many on the dais and here today. I've only had the great fortune to work with you since arriving at the county in 2019. But as we talked yesterday, we are both firm believers in local government as the startups of government innovation, because unlike the feds and the state, we're more nimble, we're more agile. We can try things, scale them up if they work, lessons learned if they're not so successful. And I think you, your fingerprints are on many of the most significant innovations in Placer County for the last few decades. And your institutional knowledge and the historical backstory on so many issues have been so helpful to me in coming to learn more about the history and the legacy of Placer County, and your continued efforts and due diligence in putting the treasury to work for a great return for the benefit of many of the school districts and other institutions and local governments throughout Placer County. Truly, your legacy cannot be understated. Your accomplishments are encyclopedic, as Supervisor Holmes attested to. And I thank you, and I hope we see you down the road, and happy trails in retirement.
And I'm going to wrap up our comments from up here, Janine. Just to say, knowing you for as many years as I have, when I was at a small local government, your patience and wisdom and ability to deal with a budget that was many zeros less than the county budget, but yet you were committed to helping all of us find solutions to our problems as taxpayers, as special districts, municipalities within our, within our county. You've always held the taxpayers and constituents as number one. And that just, I think, needs to be recognized. You've been an example to all of us to what a public servant truly is. What our calling is about is serving the taxpayers who pay our salaries, the constituents who depend on us for goods and services, and doing that efficiently and effectively. And I, all of the accomplishments, you know, I think for me, one person does make a difference. And the legacy you're leaving and the example you're setting is one you should be so very proud of, and your family as well. So thank you for that. I know we have many people who wanted to speak today and have joined us. Have you looked back there? I mean, this is a, we don't usually have this many people at our board meeting without it being controversial, or maybe they're here for another item. I'm not sure. But I do know online we have, the treasurer from Orange County wanted to say a few words. And so we'd like to start with Sheri Friedenrich. Is that right, Sheri?
Yes, Friedenrich.
Friedenrich. Thank you, Sheri, and thanks for joining us today. We'll start with you.
Well, good morning, Honorable Chair Gustafson and Board of Supervisors. My name is Sheri Friedenrich. I'm the elected treasurer for the County of Orange and the current president of the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors. Thank you for having this time to honor someone who has accomplished so much at the county of Placer and been such a great public servant. So first, thank you for taking the time out of your very busy schedule to, to make this, make this time for Janine. Janine has been a longtime member of the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors. As you see, she has served on many committees, and really, her skill sets have greatly benefited CAC-TAC also as an association representing the 58 counties in the state. We are a better organization due to her involvement and expertise and the input that she has provided over all those years at all of our meetings, at our conferences, our education conferences, and really helped us hone our skills for all of the state of California in each of those 58 counties with her expertise. Janine, as the treasurer tax collector for the past almost 30 years, really played a key role in your county, as I can hear through the whereses. She was the banker for the county, and that means she's protecting those currently about $2 billion in public funds, which really are intended to run those operations for, for the board, very important role, especially when I heard early on from the whereses about some difficulties. And of course, from the county of Orange, we know how important having a knowledgeable treasurer tax collector is, because we had filed the largest municipal bankruptcy back in 1994. So Janine's expertise in investing and in banking were just so significant to your county. In addition, she is responsible for the billing and collection of over a billion dollars in property taxes. And if Placer County is anything similar to Orange County, that funds a significant portion of your discretionary expenditure. So without her having those innovative and creative solutions and making sure that she's collecting those dollars, your constituents and public would not have the value in those assets and services that you have today. In addition, probably one of her expertises, as you've realized, is her municipal debt financing. Unfortunately, that was an area at the county of Orange that was taken away from the treasurer here. Because of various reasons, we have a separate, but I'm so glad of the work that Janine has done in that area and really has just exceeded expectations with those creative and innovative approaches. We really appreciate this critical role that she has played for the county of Placer, and we know that she has contributed greatly to our county. I do have a certificate of recognition that I have sent to her replacement. I would like to read that. It's very short. But we do want to honor her from CAC-TAC. It's a certificate of recognition in honor and recognition of your 30 years of dedicated public service as the county of Placer treasurer tax collector, and over 35 years of public service at the county of Placer, and as a member of the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors, awarded today, December 13, 2022. Janine, thank you for all you've done for your constituents, your county, and CAC-TAC. We wish you the best in your retirement, and know that you will be around, and we hope to see you. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to come in person. I'd love to get up to Placer County. It's probably got a little more snow than Orange County here, but we are so honored to be part of this meeting, to give you the recognition that is due. So thank you for letting me speak. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheri. So I'd like to open it up to those of you in the audience. Is there any other public comment before we take action on this comment resolution?
Good morning, members of the board. What a special day. I'm going to share a story. I don't want to go through all the accolades that I've gone through today. Janine and I met back in 1995, and I was assigned as a senior auditor at Mississauga Company to be the lead at Placer County's engagement. One of the things you do is you document the controls over the systems. And I had to go meet with the treasurer tax collector to document the cash receipt cycle. As has already been documented, Orange County in 1994 went bankrupt because of things happening in the treasurer's office. And like Big Brother state does, they come up with laws and form the Treasury Oversight Committee. But the state sent a bunch of auditors out to do an audit of Janine's pool, because it was deemed high risk. So I'm out waiting in the lobby, and I'm- So, I'm out waiting in the lobby, and I'm waiting my turn to go meet with Janine. I go into the office, and Janine lays in, not to me, but the auditors that are sitting out in the conference room, because they don't know what they're doing, and all they're doing is playing Solitaire all day on their computers. So, if they would just do their job and stop playing Solitaire, they might have a better understanding of what's going on in the Placer County Treasury. So, I learned two things that day. Don't ever play Solitaire when you're in the field of being an auditor. And number two, don't mess with Janine. Who knew that we would end up spending 20 years as colleagues working side by side? During those 20 years, we've had many ups and downs personally and professionally, but I've always had the utmost respect for what Janine has brought to the table. Many times, I've asked her to speak to the Auditors Association as a speaker. She was always on my short list. What can I get Janine to speak about? And we talked about all those whereas's earlier, many of those subjects she spoke to my colleagues about. Janine is very creative, passionate, innovative, hardworking, all traits I could only hope to emulate. We've made a great team. We had strong beliefs, strong internal controls, being transparent, taking our fiduciary responsibility very seriously to the public. I look forward to working with Tristan and his team as we move forward as a county. I will never forget the strong public support Janine offered to me as the auditor controller coming in in 2012, and I wish Janine nothing but the best in retirement. Thank you, Janine. It's been a privilege.
Good morning. I'm Jim Bayless with Housing Trust Placer, and I'm here for another agenda item today. But I really wasn't planning to speak, but I, I really have to step up and say that Supervisor Holmes mentioned the Valley Vision Award that Janine received. And as a former board member of Valley Vision, I was a big advocate for giving her that recognition, because the PACE program was a huge deal, not only for homeowners here in Placer County, but throughout the region. And the reason that Janine got that recognition from Valley Vision was truly because of her leadership in the region, not just Placer County. So, I wanted to say, it's a big world that she's had an influence about. Over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Williams.
It's still morning.
It's still morning. And I just wanted to offer my personal thanks for all the things that Janine has done over the years. And I have three different perspectives that I want to bring. The first was from my time on the Board of Supervisors, where I was immediately impressed with how well managed this county was, and our finances were in wonderful shape. There's been several mentions of the Empower Program, and at that time, I think I was serving as chair of Valley Vision when we were trying to get that done regionwide. And you have no idea how proud it made me feel that, that we had somebody here in Placer County who had the creativity and the energy to actually make something happen, rather than just talk about it and send it off to a committee and never have anything get accomplished. And Janine wouldn't tolerate that kind of, that kind of thing. And then, lastly, I'll just add, because there's so much more, but after I left the board, I got pulled into being on the Board of Directors of South Placer MUD. And as I was looking through our financial reports, I noticed that all our excess funds were only going to the state local agency fund. And I said, I know we can do better with the Placer County Treasury. So, I directed the staff to look into that, and immediately began transferring funds from Leifin over into the Placer County Treasury. And I think the Treasury beat that Leif fund every, every year and every month, but maybe a few months. So, thanks for making me look good and smart. I was just relying on her creativity and her intelligence, and we are going to miss her in this county.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. And I actually have, my brother wanted, is not able to be here. Oh, my name is Jackie, and this is about my mom. And my brother wanted to say something, so he actually asked me to call him so he could add something here. All right, you're on.
Hello. I don't know if you guys can hear me or if she can hear me well at all, but my name is Eric. Janine's my mom. You guys have all known her longer than I have. But I just want to say congratulations. Mom, you've had an extremely long and amazing career. You've built tons of professional relationships, and you should be extremely proud of all the work that you have done. And I strive to build a professional career like you, so thank you.
I just wanted to add on, you have been an absolutely wonderful role model. I'm trying to talk to you, but the mic's here. Like my brother said, I absolutely look up to you and admire you and the role model you've been. And I always grew up knowing that, knowing that I could be just as awesome and have a list of accomplishments, just like her, because she's been such a wonderful role model and, and always encouraged me to do the same and go out and follow whatever my passion was and whatever that was, be as successful as she is in hers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Schmidt. I'm with the Treasury Tax Collectors Office. Many times, when we talk about a person's legacy, we talk about all the great accomplishments they had on a macro level, which Supervisor Holmes read for us. But what they often don't talk about is all the accomplishments they did, they had on a day-to-day basis. And Janine was a great leader. She's been a great mentor to many of us. She created a great environment for our office, for everybody here who works for her. So, I just want to say thank you for giving us, you know, just great leadership and great direction. And as a county, we're also, you know, better for having you here for three years. And there's so many instances where, you know, it would have been really easy to just say, I'm just going to stay in my lane in this one, but Janine may have caught wind of something and spoken up, and, you know, the county could have taken maybe a much, much worse direction had she not intervened. And there's just countless times of that. And like I said, she's been a, just, you know, it's been a privilege and an honor serving under her for many of us. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Andy Feco, General Manager at PCWA and Executive Director of the Middle Fork Project Finance Authority. And I was, I was glad to hear Supervisor Wiegand mention the Finance Authority, because at a, at a critical time for the agency and the county, as we were looking at the end of a long business relationship with Pacific Gas and Electric back in 2005. And what we knew as an agency and what the county knew was that in order to take control of our future of energy generation in the county, we needed help. And we turned to Janine to help us. First and foremost, we needed a source of funds to be able to upgrade our project and keep it operational. But we also needed to form a business partnership, a JPA. We needed risk management, and Janine was there for all of that in a way that was, it's been said, innovative and entrepreneurial. And to get from where we were when I started at the agency over 16 years ago to where we are today, literally would not have happened without the foresight and the ability to see a future that Janine provided, both this board and the agency board. And so, for that, both PCWA and Finance Authority, thank Janine. We really appreciate the career.
Ah, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ed Horton. I'm just kind of a handyman around. So, Janine and I go way back. Robert and I are, I guess, the two original members of her advisory board. And, you know, Robert and I learned a lot from Janine, and she's done a wonderful job taking care of the money here in Placer County. But some other things, in one of my careers, I was a fire chief for a long time. Janine helped our district immensely in figuring out what in the hell to do to stay in business. And I had always wanted to see a merger, and we were unable to accomplish that until we got our finances in order. Janine helped us with that, came back and helped us another time, and we made it work. I also have been involved with PCWA, most of you know that, and Janine traveled with me, looking, looking over of all the assets of the Middle Fork Project prior to, and of course, with due diligence to make sure that an investment in county resources would be properly protected. And then, I guess, last but not least, maybe the most important though, is Janine's a neighbor and a friend and has done so many things for this community that hasn't been mentioned. She's just a wonderful person. So, thank you, Janine.
Good morning, Ian Gao, one of your local government fire chiefs. Chief Horton said most of it for the fire, but Janine's been an amazing help to us with financing, with support, with advice, and just friendship. And we wouldn't have been as far as we are with our local government fire agencies without her, no question about it. So, we're all going to miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, everybody. Ryan Ronco, you're a Placer County Court Recorder, registrar of voters. I have two purposes here. One is, if I go about another 10 minutes, we might add a year on to our years of service. It's gone so long. The second is, I just want to thank Janine for being such a tireless advocate and mentor for the electeds, the elected department heads here in Placer County. We hope to be able to carry on that tradition of making sure that we can find our voice that she has started for us. So, thank you very much.
I am not seeing anyone else in the room, but I do, oh, okay.
I don't have a lot to say. I just wanted to say thank you. My name is Jason Sharp. I am proud to be an employee in the Treasurer Tax Collectors Office, Placer County native, a resident of District Five, and, and an employee of Janine's. I've been very thankful to work for somebody who not only is so accomplished, we've heard all about her accomplishments, her amazing qualities of being an innovative thinker, creative, energetic, and she is all of those things. But most importantly, she is a approachable person. She is a great leader, and I'm so thankful to have been a part of her staff. And she, most importantly, treats everyone with dignity and respect, and that's not always something you find. And so, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm just saying, these are big shoes. These are big, big shoes.
I feel like.
And they've got high heels.
I know, I know. And I keep falling down in heels, so I don't know what I'll do. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. Board, Honorable Chair, Janine, I've had the pleasure to serve under her for the last nine years. She's been my mentor. She's been my friend. She has helped me grow, and I really appreciate everything that she's done for the county and myself personally. And I wish her well in her retirement, and I know it's not the last time we'll see her because she's going to be everywhere in the community in her little Jeep. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Tristan. So, I think that's, oh, no. Oh.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric Wademan, Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. I'll try to keep it together here. A little over 21 years ago, this woman named Janine approached me at a conference and recruited me from another county to come to work for this wonderful county. And then she had me interview with some guy named Robert Wiegand, just to make sure I was the guy that she wanted. Robert, all the best. Good luck to you. God bless in your retirement. One of the whereas's, I think, that many of you would not know about Janine, is where her heart truly was many of the times, that thousands of hours that she spent away from her home. And it was with her. Where she wanted to be was with her family. I know that her family had great sacrifices for and in behalf of the county for her doing what she did. Rarely in life do you get to have a boss who becomes your friend. And it's been my privilege to serve at her side. You know, the plan a long time ago was, I was going to replace her, but she never left. And I got old, and we've watched our families grow together. My kids have all moved. And I'm going to retire in a short time too, so all the best to her successor. Just wanted to thank her for her friendship and her example to not only the county, but to myself. Thanks, Janine.
Thank you so much. Everybody's comments are so profound. Is there anyone on Zoom, Megan? Well, Janine, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I will be brief. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you, Supervisor Holmes, for your forbearance and reading all of that into the record. Robert, you and I both ran for election the first time together in 1994, and I think we're the last two standing here. It's been a very rewarding and challenging journey, and it's been a service based on a true love for this county. We all are very familiar with the richness of the county's geography and its landscapes, but during 1994, while I was running for election, I got to really learn about the richness of the heritage and the communities in Placer County, which really inspired me and motivated my passion for service. A lot of people look at Placer and they don't necessarily consider it to be very diverse, but what I found, traveling around while campaigning and, yes, always in heels all over.
In the snow.
You know, we have a great heritage in the Japanese communities of Pendron and, and Loomis, and the Italian communities of Roseville and Auburn, and the Portuguese community of Lincoln, and the Spanish community of Rockland, who were the founders of Rockland. And there's just a lot of richness in that fabric of, of Placer County. My life has been truly enriched by the people that I've had the opportunity to meet and to work with and to learn from, and I am truly, truly grateful. I know the list of accomplishments was long, and again, I thank you for your forbearance there, but I couldn't have done it without a lot of support from a lot of people. And in, in many, many different ways, many different ways. I started to make a list of different people that I felt inspired by and who have touched me, and the list got longer and longer and longer. All of you here, certainly, so I want to acknowledge all of you here, and many, many more. Some have long since retired from the county, some who have long since passed. And I just want to say that it's, it's been, again, a very rewarding journey, and I have been deeply touched by all of the people that I have met along the way. I know that it's a very exciting time in the county, so it's bittersweet to leave because it's a very exciting time. There are huge opportunities and some challenges, and I have great confidence that the board and the staff will rise to the occasion and meet those challenges and will. meet those challenges and will fully exploit those opportunities to the benefit of all of the people here in Placer County. So, I want to thank the board and all the past boards for all of their support. I've enjoyed the camaraderie, the relationships, the humor many times. Remember, Alex Verrah, couldn't beat him at the goat milking contest at the county fair. And deep from my heart, I want to thank my staff. I have been so blessed for so long to have an amazing staff who always had my back and was always there and who I just care very, very deeply with and who I have made friendships with. Some of them came up and spoke. Eric has been wonderful, absolutely wonderful, for 21 years. I've been blessed that so many of my staff have come and stayed, that so many of them I have worked with for 20-plus years before they retired ahead of me. And I want to say congratulations and good luck to Tristan and to Jonathan, Treasurer Tax Collector-elect and Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. And I just can't say, I just can't find all the words to say thank you enough. I've been truly blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Thank you. And so, as a point of order, I do need a motion. And I was looking at Supervisor Weigant to make the motion.
Okay.
And Supervisor Holmes will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Yes, we'll let you go then. But we do have a gift from the board, and we do want to take a photo with the big resolution. I think that's down here. And our gift to you is a national park pass for you to go traveling because we heard- You're welcome. We'll get a photo with-
The plaque is as tall as she is.
Megan, look at this, everybody. You'll probably never see one that's bigger than this.
But I won't get it.
Go ahead, Stan.
I did it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let's get a photo with your family. It's going to take a huge while.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Oh, yeah. Where is he?
He's right here.
Oh, okay. Make sure you get right there. Good job.
Okay. Thank you all. We're going to resume our business and go to our 9:40 timed item. This is item two on our agenda for today. Sewer Maintenance District One, North Auburn. And Jared Deck is on Zoom to present this item.
All right. Good morning, Chair Gustafson, board members. Jared Deck, Program Manager for Environmental Engineering Division. I'll try to make this item quick in order to not get in the way of the celebrations today. But first, I'd like to congratulate both Supervisor Weigant and Janine for their many years of service to the county and continued efforts to make Placer County a better place. Now for the item. In 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved creation of the District Capacity Fee Program for SMD-1. This was a reimbursement program designated a portion of the SMD connection fee to increase capacity in the existing SMD-1 collection system. The fee is based on the cost of capacity improvement projects anticipated over the next 30 years and spread over all new SMD-1 customers projected over the same time period. Timberline Village is a residential development in North Auburn with Timberline Village LLC. Phase one of the project was required to increase previous capacity in the existing SMD-1 Dewitt Trunk Sewer, Segment Four. This line has been identified as an existing deficiency in the SMD-1 collection and was eligible for reimbursement of certain associated construction costs. Staff determined Timberline is eligible to receive $3,276,379 as reimbursement under the fee program. This amount was determined by reviewing and verifying invoices and associated documentation provided by Timberline. The District Capacity Fee Program currently has a certain amount of cash and reserves. So, we are able to provide $1,144,000 for the initial payment. This will leave a balance of $2,132,379 without interest, which will be paid as district connection fees are collected on a quarterly basis until paid in full or 30 years from the accepted date of the project, whichever is soonest. So, for the items we're requesting for approval, it's first to approve a district capacity fee agreement in the amount not to exceed $3,276,379 with Timberline Village LLC for reimbursement of costs associated with increasing sewer capacity and sewer maintenance District One, North Auburn, and authorize the Director of Public Works or is designated to execute the agreement. We are also requesting an approval of fiscal year 2022/23 budget amendment for sewer maintenance District One fund in the amount of $1,144,000 and cancel sewer maintenance District One restricted capacity cost fund reserves in the same amount of $1,144,000. And our final ask is to determine that the proposed action is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And with that, I will answer any questions if there are.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate that. Are there any questions, board members? I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have one on Zoom, Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Garabedian, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. I have a question and a comment. I have, I'd like to know where this wastewater will be treated and if it's going to Lincoln. Lincoln is at or near capacity. What is the, if it is going to Lincoln, how is it going to be managed, over what timeframe? And so, I have some serious concerns about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Are there any other public comments?
No more on Zoom, Chair.
Jared, would you like to speak to any of those comments or questions?
Yes. And so, this sewer will be treated by the City of Lincoln. It'll flow through the SMD-1 regional pipeline. And currently, there is capacity for this sewer, and also, the City of Lincoln, along with Placer County, are working on upgrades of that facility, too, in order to handle additional flows coming down for the future.
Thank you, Jared. Board members, I'll bring it back to us. Are there any other comments or questions, or I'd entertain a motion? I have a motion. Holmes, second. Weigant. And this is a roll call vote.
Gore? Weigant? Holmes? Jones? Gustafson?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Jared, helping get us back on time, too. So, we'll move to item three, our 9:45 timed item. And this is from Sidra, the Brake Brothers General Plan Amendment Minor Use Permit Modification Categorical Exemption. This is found on page 13 of our board packets. And Kara is going to present.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Gustafson. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am Kara Conklin with the Planning Services Division. And the item before you this morning is the Brake Brothers Community Plan Amendment and Minor Use Permit Modification. So, the project site is about a third of an acre and is located on the northeast corner of 13th Street and Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard and Riosa Road in the town of Sheridan. As you can see, it's kind of, I call it a pot-shaped parcel. Looks like the shape of a pot. And so, on that site is an existing commercial building, and the brake shop would go within that commercial building. So, the project site is zoned general commercial combining a town center commercial district. And that is the front of the building on the right side of your screen. It's got two car bays to operate on vehicles there. And right next door to that is a coffee shop. So, the proposed project is a modification to the existing minor use permit to allow the operation of a 790-square-foot brake shop to operate within a 3,663-square-foot commercial structure. That requires an amendment to the Sheridan Community Plan to allow vehicle maintenance and repair as an allowed use within that town center commercial district. The proposed project also proposes to have two employees on site, working Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And they expect to have around three to four customers per day or around 15 to 20 customers per week. They are only doing brakes, so swapping in and out, no other type of vehicle maintenance, nothing like that, just swapping out brakes. A little bit about the town center commercial district overlay. What that does is that allows for a variety of different housing types, along with commercial uses that generally can't be done within a commercial zoned district. So, they add the town center commercial overlay. It also allows modification of the use, including height, setbacks, and other development standards. And the purpose is to establish more specific standards that are appropriate for the site. In this specific area along the 13th Street corridor, some commercial uses are limited in this area. Within the Sheridan Community Plan, what we are asking is to modify Table 3.6.2.1-2. It is a table for disallowed land uses within the 13th Street corridor. And we are asking to add an asterix, asterisk, to repair and maintenance, and that would allow that portion to be at the corner of Riosa Road and 13th Street only. That area includes four parcels. So, the second portion of the Sheridan Community Plan that we would like to amend, if you see on the right, there is a black dashed line, and that is the 13th Street corridor. There are four parcels located there. And we would like to add vehicle and repair maintenance, along with gas station service uses. And that would allow for the brake shop to be located there. This project is consistent with the Sheridan Community Plan. It is consistent with land use goals, including a balanced land use pattern that provides appropriate mix of uses to help accommodate resident employment, service, and social needs. This project also takes full advantage of existing infrastructure. It's being located in an existing building. It supports the development of mixed-use commercial, office, live, and work spaces along the 13th Street corridor, and encourages infill projects that are contiguous to existing development and allows for cost-effective orderly growth within the plan, and establishes guidelines and standards specifically for 13th Street to allow for a mix of residential commercial and office, live, work uses. One issue that we had seen ahead of time, this little commercial area has nine existing parking spaces on site. That is enough parking for the coffee shop only. With adding the brake shop in there, we would need an additional three parking spaces for a total of 12 parking spaces within the center. How we have figured that parking out is along the north side of the building here, there, sorry about that. There are spaces for two parallel parking spots, as well as the two parking bays within the building. So, those can be used as parking spaces, which would have a total of four spaces. If parking should get out of hand, out of this commercial center, the app, it is noted in our conditions of approval that the applicant would work with the county to work on satisfying any additional parking needs. This project was presented at the Sheridan Municipal Advisory Council on November 9. And at that meeting, members voted three to zero with two members absent to recommend approval for the Planning Commission. There were not any issues raised at that meeting, except for just offering up additional parking options along 13th Street. And then, it was presented again the next day at the Planning Commission on November 10, 2022, where members voted five to zero with two members absent to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. At the Planning Commission, we did receive one letter of opposition. And then, we received a letter of opposition again late last night. And the issues that were raised, they were, those letters were both submitted by the same individuals. And the issues that were raised in those letters, including noise and traffic, those have been addressed in the staff report. And so, my recommendation for you is that staff forwards the Planning Commission's November 10, 2022 recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve the following. Conduct a public hearing on the Brake Brothers project. Find the project categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301A and 15303C of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.030A and 18.36.050C of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class I existing facilities and Class III new construction and conversion of small structures. Recommendation three, to adopt a resolution to amend the Sheridan Community Plan to allow vehicle repair and maintenance as an allowed use within portions of the town center commercial zone district, as shown in the Community Plan Amendment included as Exhibit One to the resolution. And recommendation number four, approve a minor use permit modification to allow a 790-square-foot brake shop to operate within an existing commercial structure located at 5710 Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard in Sheridan. I am available should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karen. Kara, sorry. Supervisor Gore?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. First of all, how long has the building been empty?
The building has been empty for at least two years. That portion of the building, yes.
And what was it used as previously? I see roll-up doors. What was the building used for previously?
So, there was a design review for that building a couple of years ago, and they, it was a very dilapidated building. So, they repainted the outside. And there was a proposed boat services shop that was going to go in there, but they never ended up occupying that building space.
Okay. And then, the regular work hours are just normal, Monday through Friday typically business hours, correct?
Correct. I believe seven to five.
Thank you. Because I did see the letter from the resident who is concerned, and it's helpful to see that that building's been empty for a while, and it was prepared for a fairly similar use. And much better to have the building occupied and helping the community versus just letting it sit empty.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Not seeing any, so we'll open the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Applicant. We'd like to first hear from you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No. Is there any questions I can answer?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board on this item? I'm not seeing any in the room and there's no one on Zoom. We have received a couple items of correspondence which the board had a chance to review this morning and take a look at, the one that came in last night. So we'll bring it back to the board. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Are there any comments or do I, this will require three separate motions?
I'd like to move that we find the project categorically exempt in accordance with section fifteen thirty et cetera regarding the California Environmental Quality Act.
Great. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. And Supervisor Jones's light came on momentarily. Did you have a question?
No, I was going to ask a question, but it's not really.
Okay, so I have a motion Supervisor Wigant and Second Holmes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry Gore.
Aye.
You caught me. Try. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
I'll move we adopt a resolution to amend the Sheridan Community Plan in accordance with staff discussion.
Supervisors Wigant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? And we'll move on.
And finally, I move we approve the minor use permit modification to allow a seven hundred and ninety square foot Brake shop to operate within an existing commercial structure located at fifty-seven ten Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard in Sheridan.
Supervisors Wigant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much. Thank you. It's all approved.
Thank you.
Thank you staff. Okay, we'll move on to our ten oh five timed item. This is item number four on our agenda, found on page thirty-five of our packet. This is the Granite Bay Medical Office Complex General Plan Community Plan Amendment Rezone Design Review, mitigated negative.
Good morning Callie.
Good morning Supervisors Chair Gustafson. My name is Callie Kedinger Cecil with the Placer County Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is the Granite Bay Medical Office Complex Project, which includes a general plan amendment, rezone, and design review agreement. The two point one three acre project site is shown here in red and is located at the northwest corner of Berg Street and Douglas Boulevard in Granite Bay. The site is zoned residential single-family combining minimum building size of twenty thousand square feet. Parcels to the north and west are under the same zoning designation and are developed with residential uses. The parcels to the south are zoned general commercial and are developed with the Corey Ridge Commercial Development and other commercial development, including the animal feed store. Across the street from the project site is zoned office professional combining design scenic corridor and that site is developed with the Corey Ridge Office Development Project. The project site is designated as low-density residential, zero point four to zero point nine dwelling units per acre as shown in green. The parcels to the south and the east are under a commercial zoning, commercial land use designation as shown in purple. These photos show the existing condition of the site. The site is undeveloped and supports a small woodland. It is, as I mentioned, it is currently undeveloped and there is an ephemeral stream that crosses the northern property boundary and then enters the project site at the center, running through the center of the site, and finally terminating through a culver at Douglas Boulevard. The project would support two office buildings for medical uses and potential uses would include outpatient services, allied health services such as physical therapists, speech, pathologists, or allergists, mental health clinics, radiologists, et cetera. So it would be focused for medical and related uses. The project is seeking a general plan amendment from low-density residential, zero point four to zero point nine dwelling units per acre, to commercial. A rezone from residential single-family combining minimum building size of twenty thousand square feet, to office professional combining scenic design corridor, and is also seeking approval of a site design review agreement. Shown here is the site plan for the project. And as mentioned, the project is proposing to construct two medical office buildings. The project would also develop seventy-eight parking spaces as well as an entrance at the northwest corner connecting to Berg Street. More specifically, the two buildings total thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. Building one would be six thousand one hundred and fifty square feet and building two would be seven thousand five hundred square feet. Seventy-eight parking spaces would be developed for the site and additional site improvements include utility installation, constructing an entrance on Berg Street, site grading, installation of retaining walls, tree removal, and frontage improvements. The project is also seeking a reduction in the front setback as allowed by the Granite Bay Community Plan and is requesting to allow building one to be forty-seven and a half feet from the edge of right-of-way and building two to be thirty-five feet from the right-of-way from Douglas Boulevard where a seventy-five foot setback is normally required by the Granite Bay Community Plan. This project has undergone environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Public review was opened on March first and closed on March thirtieth. I forgot to mention, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration. That is the document that went out for public review. We identified mitigation measures for aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, hydrology, noise, and geology in soils. We did receive comment letters during the public review period, including two from residents. There was letters from the Waterford Homeowners Association, residents from the Villa Milano Court of Residential Development, as well as letters from PG&E and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. The letters from PG&E and the Water Quality Control Board were just standard form letters outlining their basic requirements for project implementation. And the other letters we received were expressing opposition to the project and raised concerns regarding tree removal, density, aesthetics, traffic concerns, consistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan, and consistency with adjacent land uses, density, and potential impacts to property values. With regards to aesthetics, shown here are renderings of the project site as viewed from Douglas and Berg as well as Douglas. The buildings are located toward the front of the site and parking located at the rear as required by the Granite Bay Community Plan. And the areas that were not screened by the, by the buildings, which is right here, have a very robust landscape design in order to screen that from public view. The project is also designed to be consistent with the Douglas Boulevard Scenic Roadway standards. And the staff report discusses in detail the goals and policies that the project is consistent with, but to highlight a few, it's consistent with goal three point two to ensure compatibility with neighboring land uses. Goal three point three for providing locally-serving commercial uses. Non-residential saint principles for design and color, as well as compliance with section four point two point eleven, which is the Douglas Boulevard requirements for providing a robust landscape and site design plan. Appendix save of the Granite Bay Community Plan also includes specific policies for design of projects on Douglas Boulevard. The project has been designed according to those principles and include a craftsman-style architecture and has stone veneer, exposed wood beams, and low-pitched roofs. The proposed landscape plan is also consistent with appendix save of the Granite Bay Community Plan in that it incorporates native and drought-tolerant plantings, including manzanita, toyon, incorporation of oaks to be saved on-site, lilac, et cetera. Eighteen native trees would be incorporated into the project site that are on-site. This project is removing one hundred and seventeen trees, including seventy-two oaks. As I mentioned, the oaks that would be retained would be incorporated into the project site. It should be noted that those oaks that are along the northern property line provide a very valuable visual buffer. And there are concerns that landscaping and development of the parking lot may interfere with the long-term survivability of those oaks. So a very specific mitigation measure has been imposed to require replanting and reestablishment of a monitoring program if those oaks fail within five years after the date of the certificate of occupancy. Four biological resources reports were prepared, including two biological resources reports, an arborist report, and a wetland delineation to review the potential biological resources that are on-site as well as identify potential impacts. Those reports, sorry, I should mention that the first report was prepared in 2014 and a second report was prepared in 2020. The reason for the second report was to evaluate potential impacts resulting from changes in the site plan from the 2014 submittal to determine if any circumstances had changed since the first report was prepared. And then also to establish compliance with the Placer County Conservation Program, also known as the PCCP. Those reports determine that there is one point eight acres of foothill woodland, there is point one acre of disturbed area, point two acre of roadway, point zero three acre of ephemeral stream, and point zero one acre of roadside ditch. The reports concluded that the site does not support any special status plant species, but does have the potential to support habitat for raptors and nesting birds. And the ephemeral stream and roadside ditch were determined to not support fish species or aquatic habitat. The project will be converting on-site habitat to a non-natural condition and is required to mitigate for this land conversion through participation in the PCCP. Additional biological mitigation measures include pre-construction awareness training, pre-construction special status species surveys, payment of land conversion fees, and obtaining regulatory permits from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as well as the Placer County Authority for impacts to the ephemeral stream. Two noise studies were prepared for the project, one with the original site design in 2014 and an update was prepared in 2020 to evaluate potential noise generated from the site. The, the report noted that noise would be generated during construction, would be generated during the operational phase of the project, and then noise would also be generated from the parking lot and traffic on Douglas. Mitigation measures identified in the noise study include requiring the building to be, or the building equipment to be located a minimum of fifty feet from the property line or otherwise be shielded, to install six, a minimum of six-foot-tall masonry walls, and to ensure that construction time is limited to daytime hours only. These measures ensure consistency with the noise element of the general plan as well as the noise ordinance. Two traffic impact studies were prepared for the project, one in 2014 and then a new analysis was done in order to evaluate the project's vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. And the traffic studies determine that all locally-serving intersections would continue to operate within the level of services as determined by the Granite Bay Community Plan. And also noted that the project be a locally-serving, non-residential use that could have the effect of actually reducing regional VMT as it's providing a local medical use. Finally, collision rates were reviewed for the intersection at Berg and Douglas and the traffic study concluded that the facility experiences point zero six collisions per entering, per million entering vehicles, which is lower than the statewide average for similar facilities, which is point two four collisions per million entering vehicles. The project is required to make circulation improvements and pay traffic mitigation fees. The project is proposing a retaining wall along the north and west property boundaries. There are portions that would be six feet, so it would be ten feet primarily within the northwest corner, and then it would step down to six feet. This retaining wall is required to handle the cuts and fills for the site. And as noted during the discussion about the noise study, that noise study did identify a minimum six-foot-tall masonry wall as a potential mitigation measure to reduce sound. So this wall is being installed for that reason. And then lastly, the zoning ordinance requires projects adjacent to non-commercial to provide a minimum six-foot-tall barrier. And with recent adoption of a zoning text amendment, ten-foot-tall retaining wall and fence combinations are allowed as part of the discretionary project as reviewed by the hearing bodies. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the project is seeking a reduction in the front setback. The Granite Bay Community Plan requires that projects provide a minimum seventy-foot right-of-way on Douglas Boulevard and buildings have to be seventy-five feet from that right-of-way on the north side of Douglas Boulevard unless they can demonstrate that they are providing landscaping, quality site design, or other architectural techniques to provide screening and other aesthetic improvements. And that is what this project is doing. So they are seeking a reduction such that building one would be forty-seven and a half feet from the right-of-way of Douglas Boulevard and building two would be thirty-five feet. So to demonstrate what they're requesting, shown here is the existing fifty-foot right-of-way in yellow. And the project is required to dedicate seventy-foot right-of-way as required by the Granite Bay Community Plan and that's shown in orange. So the existing right-of-way line is right here and the proposed is right here. So though they are requesting a reduction in the front setback, they would still be, you know, pretty far from the, from the actual pavement of Douglas Boulevard. But it would be forty-eight feet from the proposed right-of-way, thirty-five feet from the proposed right-of-way. And this would be consistent with the development that is across the street. This is the Corey Ridge Office Project and this project was approved in 2019 and also sought a reduction in the front setback. These buildings are located twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-eight feet from the seventy-foot right-of-way of Douglas Boulevard. So the proposed request to, to have a reduction in the front setback is consistent with the adjacent development across the street. This project has undergone several design revisions. The first was in 2014. This project, or this first design had two buildings totaling over thirteen thousand square feet with two entrances from Douglas and Berg. This project was presented to the Granite Bay MAC in 2016. And at that meeting, the MAC voted to recommend denial of this project. There was concerns regarding the entrance off of Douglas, the size and location of the buildings, as well as the fact that the parking was primarily located in the front of the site where the community plan suggests that buildings should be in the front with parking in back so that the buildings screen the parking area from public view. After the MAC denied that, the applicant went back to the drawing board and in 2021 submitted a site plan showing four buildings that are located in front, eliminated the, the entrance off of Douglas, and was proposing to subdivide the site into four parcels. This was presented to the Granite Bay MAC in 2021 and the MAC suggested some redesigns. So the applicant pulled the buildings further back from Douglas and shrunk the buildings in size. And we brought this back to the MAC in April of this year and the MAC voted unanimously for the Planning Commission to, to deny the project. We brought this iteration to the Planning Commission in April. And, sorry, and the Planning Commission requested another redesign. So the project that is before you today is the two-building design. So it went from two buildings to four buildings, to four buildings slightly smaller, moved back from Douglas, and then back to two buildings. So this is the, the fourth iteration of the proposed project. And I'd also like to note that they are no longer proposing to subdivide the parcels. The site consists of two existing undeveloped parcels and each building would be on its own parcel. So there's no longer a request for a tentative map to subdivide the site. Some differences between the four-building design and the two-building design include a slight reduction in the amount of trees that would be removed, a slight increase in the amount of trees that would be retained, a reduction in the amount of wall-mounted light packs. The, one of the buildings would be further back from Douglas than initially proposed. And the total square footage has also been slightly reduced. So this project is consistent with the commercial development to the south and east and residential uses were explored here by the applicant and ultimately determined to be infeasible. The scenic design corridor ensures the site and building design comply with the Granite Bay Community Plan, the landscape design guidelines, and the Placer County Design Manual. And as I've mentioned, this project has been presented to the MAC on several occasions. The first was in 2016. The MAC ultimately voted to recommend denial on that. And it was at that time that the applicant kind of took a step back and redesigned the project. In 2021, after some redesigns, the MAC recommended the number of buildings be decreased. They also wanted to see the ephemeral stream that's on-site be retained somehow and incorporated into the project design. And also expressed a perception that the project doesn't fit with the project site. So the applicant redesigned. So the applicant redesigned and brought forward another design, but this was again four buildings. We brought that forward in April of this year, and the MAC voted four to one to recommend denial to the planning commission. This project was presented to the planning commission on two occasions. The first was in April shortly after the MAC meeting. At that meeting, we had a discussion about Senate Bill 166, which is no net loss of residential. There was a concern by the commission that as the site is a residential site, that by rezoning it to commercial, would we be losing any residential sites? And so Senate Bill 166 is, is specific to sites that have been identified in the housing elements, regional housing needs allocation. And so at, at the April hearing, we didn't have an answer for that, and the planning commission also directed the applicant to conduct another site redesign to reduce the number of buildings from four to two. Because the, because staff didn't have an answer regarding SB 166, and also to allow additional time for another redesign, the planning commission took action to continue the item and also requested that staff return to the MAC with the other redesign. On October 13th, 2022, staff presented another redesign. This was the two-building design that is brought forward today. Staff also demonstrated that the proposed project's site is not identified in the housing element as one of the RENA sites, so it would not be inconsistent with SB 166. We also received three public comments. The comments were primarily regarding concerns about existing empty office buildings and occupancy rates, noted that rezones and plan amendments are to be taken seriously, and also noted that the item was not brought back to the MAC. So staff explained that we did not go back to the MAC because the applicant had put forth a good faith effort in the various redesigns that was responsive to the concerns heard. The commissioners also discussed the office occupancy rates, but also noted that the project zoning appeared to be misaligned in that it is one of the last remaining undeveloped sites on the north side of Douglas Boulevard and has not developed ever. It's, it's been undeveloped. The commission also noted that the proposed project represents a justifiable public benefit and would be a locally-serving medical use, and the planning commission ultimately voted to unanimously recommend approval of the project. So though this did not go back to the MAC again, it has been brought to the MAC on several occasions, and the, the application materials, the staff report, and the various redesigns demonstrate that the applicant has made a very good faith effort in responding to the concerns that he's heard from the community and his redesign of his project on numerous occasions. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and the mitigated negative declaration in the staff report identifies and discusses the key goals, policies, and principles of the Granite Bay Community Plan that, that are exhibited by the proposed project. Mitigation measures have been identified to reduce potential impacts, and the proposed project is consistent with the proposed zoning and land use designation that they are requesting. So with that, I am forwarding the planning commission's October 13th, 2022 recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve the following. The first is adopt the mitigated negative declaration and erratum thereto prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, including adoption of the mitigation monitoring reporting program. The second is to adopt a resolution to amend the Granite Bay Community Plan land use designation of the site from low-density residential 0.4 to 0.9 acre minimum to commercial, as supported by the findings found in the staff report. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the site from residential single-family combining minimum building site of 20,000 square feet to office professional, supported by findings contained in the staff report. And lastly, approve the proposed site designer view agreement that allows the two proposed buildings to be located 35 feet and 47.5 feet from the right-of-way of Douglas Boulevard, where a minimum of 75 feet is normally required, as permitted by the Granite Bay Community Plan, and subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report. With that, I conclude my presentation, and the applicant is also here should you have any questions. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Supervisor Holmes, did you want to have a question before the applicant spoke, or did you want the?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Callie, for this report. On, under slide 14, tree removal, you don't have to go there. It says oaks retained on the northern property line required to be replanted and monitored if they fail. What's the concern about the trees on the northern side that there might be, they might fail?
It's an aesthetic concern. They, they provide a very nice aesthetic screen for the adjacent property owners, so if those oaks fail as a result from irrigation from landscaping or from the roots being impacted by pavement of the parking lot, then they would have to replant oaks.
And if they do fail, who is their, who is responsible to make sure that they are replanted? Is that the?
The Planning Services Division.
Placer County. And do you have a tree monitor? It says they have to be monitored if they fail.
Staff does the monitoring. We don't have a specific tree specialist, so when a project enters into a mitigation monitoring replanting program, staff is responsible for ensuring compliance. So if any of those oaks fail, there's a requirement that those be replanted, and then that also restarts the clock on, on the five years.
So there'll be someone to monitor, making sure those trees are healthy, and arborists or some, somebody on staff that'll make sure those trees are healthy?
That is a requirement, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Jones, did you have questions?
Yes. Hi, Callie. I was wondering, this requirement to monitor the trees, seems to me I've heard in other projects, we have a similar requirement on trees that are dedicated for, for preservation. Is, is that something, it's not just this project?
No, it's, it's a common mitigation measure and is allowed per Chapter 19, which contains the oak woodland ordinance, and there is subset, there's a section that describes this very process.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions from the board at this time. I'd like to open it up to the applicant to make any comments to us if you'd like.
I think she did a terrific job of, but I'll answer any questions if there's any questions.
If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Rescue.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I do have one comment, actually.
I figured if I talked long enough.
Yeah, I'll figure something out. A little nervous. The property is in escrow with a doctor who's an allergist. His, the name of his company is Granite Bay Allergies, and he has outgrown his current facilities, and he plans to be at the location, so there won't be a vacant building there. He's going to build one at a time because his wife is thinking about bringing her practice to the other building, so. And as he pointed out to me, he goes, I'm up at the top of Sierra College, and most of my clients are Granite Bay, so I'm actually going to reduce traffic. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a item for a public hearing, so we're going to open up the public hearing on this, and would any members of the public like to speak to this item? Boy, that's quiet. Want to give it a minute? Is there anybody on Zoom?
I see them on Zoom.
None here? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing. Supervisor Jones, you have some comments?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions, Callie, for you. It says that we're going to preserve, they are going to preserve 18 oak trees. Will those be marked so that we know which trees are going to be preserved?
They're not required to be marked.
Oh. I real, well, you just recall, one of my previous developments in Granite Bay, we had a big problem with oak trees when they weren't marked, and so that's why I'm asking. How will we know which 18 trees?
So the, the arborist reports do contain locations, so when we review the improvement plans against the information that's already been provided, we can see which ones were supposed to remain. The landscape plan also does a very nice job of showing which oaks are to be retained.
Supervisor Jones, Chris Schmidt, the Planning Services Division. The contractor or applicant will need to fence those trees.
That's correct.
Being retained prior to construction. And staff will be out there to look to make sure the fence is installed.
Thank you, Chris. So my, my other question is, you, you made a point that it was not brought back to the MAC after it had been redesigned with two buildings rather than four. Could you tell me why it wasn't brought back to the MAC?
Yeah, we didn't bring it back because at that point, we had brought it on several occasions, and we didn't feel that there was a benefit to going back to the MAC, especially provided that there was additional opportunities for public input and review through the planning commission hearing as well as today. So if there were additional concerns from the MAC, there were additional opportunities for review and comment.
Right. I thought the number of hearings was a, a part of the logic for not bringing it back to the MAC. Was this limited to five hearings, as some other projects are? No? Chris is shaking his head.
I can speak to that.
Oh, thanks, Clayton.
Clayton Cook, Supervising County Council. No, this wasn't limited to the minimum hearing requirement, or maximum hearing requirements under SB 330. There was some discussion about taking it back to the MAC during that April 28th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission deliberated on that, but ultimately decided that it did not need to go back to the MAC when they continued the item.
Okay. I do know that MAC members had expressed a desire to have two buildings rather than four buildings. Do you recall?
I do.
But they still voted no. When they voted no, was it for the four-building layout?
That's correct.
So they never had an opportunity to vote on the two-building layout?
The original site plan was two buildings, as you may recall.
Oh, that was way before my time.
Yes. Yeah. So there, there was a two-building iteration that the community ultimately denied.
Okay. And then, could you go back to the right-of-way, the setbacks? Because what I'm confused with, because I'm not a planner, or hence you people don't want me working in your department, go back to the setbacks. So the building is set back, let's take the one on the left, 47 from the, is that from the edge of the property?
No, it is from the proposed right-of-way.
Okay.
So per the Granite Bay Community Plan, projects are required to dedicate 70 feet of right-of-way. There's 50 existing, so this project would dedicate an additional 20 feet, and then the new right-of-way line would be right here. This is the existing.
Okay. So what are, what are we going to be doing with that right-of-way, that dedication?
It's, it's being dedicated, there's nothing occurring with the right-of-way. It's, the Granite Bay Community Plan requires that buildings be set back 75 feet from the right-of-way.
Right.
From that proposed right-of-way.
Correct.
So these buildings would have to be 75 feet back. However, per this policy of the Granite Bay Community Plan, for discretionary permits located on the north side only, a setback of less than 75 feet is otherwise required by the community plan, may be approved by the decision-making body as long as a visual buffer is in place. That provides for one or more of the following. First is landscaping, building architectural design, or other buffer techniques that have been incorporated into the project to reduce visual impacts of the project when viewed from the Douglas Boulevard right-of-way. And two, a setback of less than 75 feet would result in increased setbacks from either adjacent properties or onsite resources and/or conditions which on balance results in better overall site planning and design. I would argue that this project has done an effort to comply with, one, by providing landscaping as well as high-quality building architecture.
So that discretion, though, is solely for the north side of Douglas Boulevard?
That's correct.
Yet all of the office, commercial complexes on the south side are less than 75 feet? Okay.
And to add to that 70-feet requirement, that's ultimately Douglas Boulevard could be six lanes, three in each direction. We asked for that right-of-way. The chances of it ever going to six lanes are probably very low. So in the meantime, that extra 20 feet of, of right-of-way dedication will be landscaped by the applicant, could be ripped out in the future if we ever go to six lanes, but it'll, it's not going to be a dirt patch. It'll be heavily landscaped.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then I also question on the, the culvert, the culvert. I think they're required to manage storm runoff, and it says even in here in the report that the culvert, the, the pipe is undersized?
It is undersized, and they aren't required to upsize it because the project is not increasing flows. They're, they're maintaining the existing flows, and I don't know if, Tony, do you have anything to add to that?
I can't.
Okay, thank you. This is Tony McCurry from RFE CWE Engineering.
Okay.
Yeah, good morning, supervisors. The, the current drainage that goes underneath Douglas Boulevard through that culvert, it's, it exceeds the capacity of that culvert in the existing state. The project won't add tributary flows to the culvert, so we weren't required to replace the, the culvert to upsize it.
Okay, my only concern might be is if we have some rain like we've had these past couple of days, and it's running off the, of the, the parking lot, will it be able to handle that?
So the onsite drainage is going to be, this is specifically just the onsite drainage, is going to be detained, and so it's going to reduce the runoff flows to the pre-construction level. So think of it like there's a large tributary area upstream of the project site that flows through and is why that culvert through Douglas is undersized now. We're going to take all the onsite storm water, put it underground in, in an underground trench, basically, through oversized pipes, and detain it onsite so that it isn't adding to the flows going through that culvert.
Okay, because, I mean, I do have concerns with flooding. We've seen over at the Bayside Construction with this heavy, heavy rain that we've had, it's nearly flooded, it's flooded across Cabot Stallman, up into the yards of the adjacent homes, one right up to their doorstep. So I just want to make sure we don't have to worry about anything like that.
Yeah, no, it was definitely considered with the design, and it's, we've completely separated the offsite runoff from the onsite, so it won't contribute to an increase in flows.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I think I just have one or two other questions. Callie, there's a mention that they're going to pay traffic mitigation fees. What are those for?
Those traffic mitigation fees go into a capital improvements project and, or plan, and those funds are used to support future traffic improvements.
Okay. In Granite Bay? Okay. Oh, then I did want to know about the hours of construction, because I've had some other complaints of other developments in my area, in my district, that were, they were vague on their hours, and their hours, they were starting at something like 5:00 a.m., and all the surrounding neighbors were not happy with the noise and the dirt and, you know, everything. So it's, what are the hours of construction?
The hours of construction are very specific to occur during daytime only. There is a condition of approval that outlines the, the exact hours. I want to say it begins at 6:00 a.m. I don't recall off the top of my head, but that was...
I have that.
Oh, thank you.
It's Condition 73. It is Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during daylight savings time, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during standard time, and Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay. That sounds reasonable. Okay, I think, I did want you to just address the idea of, well, before we go there, I'm looking at the properties that you're showing adjacent to this property. Now, I know the adjacent that's just west is, there's a home set way back on that property, but I thought that the property that was just west of that was owned by the nursery.
So let me go back. There's a good one that shows it. So it's this parcel over here that's the nursery?
What I'm looking at is this, this.
Got it. The zoning one.
Sure. Yeah, that one, you just passed it.
Yeah. This one?
No, go back to the green one, right there. Because you're showing commercial in the, in the purple.
Mm-hmm. Bushnell is not commercial.
Oh, it's not?
Mm-mm.
Even though it's a, it's a commercial venture?
Right. But it's, it's a nursery, and so it's seen as agricultural use.
Okay. Okay, I just, it's good for my constituents to understand that although it's considered agricultural, since they, they are, they grow, I think on that parcel, they do grow some plants there, at least, or they used to, and so it is a commercial venture, even though it may not be classed as commercial. It's, it's not residential.
Right. Well, there are a number of uses permitted in residential. Right, well, there are a number of uses permitted in residential zone districts that aren't strictly residential.
Right, right, so anyway, so really that's the only parcel in that area that is still residential, is the one directly next, directly west of them.
The one to the north is also residential. These are all residential.
Right, I'm kind of comparing what's on Douglas.
Got it.
The issue with this, I know I have a number of constituents that don't want this rezoned from residential, but residential poses a number of problems. Is that the parcel is not big enough to have a setback like all the other neighborhoods along Douglas. They're all set back quite far with the big sound wall. So if we did that with this parcel, set it way back with a big sound wall, would there be any property left to develop with homes?
Yeah, that's certainly questionable. And some other issues that came about when reviewing potential residential uses was access. Residential access on this corner for Douglas could be unsafe. And so one would have to perhaps have an easement across the parcels and only have an entrance off Berg. Furthermore, potential residential uses could result in additional impacts. They could take out every single tree. It's a zone for residential, so unless they were requesting a discretionary use, there would be no subsequent review per the California Environmental Quality Act. So there's a number of potential impacts that could potentially be greater if there was a residential use here compared to a commercial.
Yeah, well, I know I walked that area around this parcel with several of my MAC members. And I have to say that standing there on Douglas Boulevard's side, the traffic was moving so fast. And it was extremely loud, and I found it to be very unsafe. I would not want to live there if I had pets or small children because of Douglas. It was just, I didn't think it lent itself to being a very good residential without having the large setback, as we said, like the other neighborhoods, and a nice big sound wall. Thanks so much for all your answers.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Callie? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. These are individual motions. And the first one would be to adopt the Granite Bay Medical Office Complex Project Mitigated NEGDEC, Mitigation Monitoring Reporting Program, and ERATA prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll move approval of the item.
Supervisors Gore and Wiegant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. The next motion would be to adopt a resolution to amend the Granite Bay Community Plan Land Use Diagram to change the land use designation from low-density residential, .4 to .9 acre minimum to commercial. Do I have a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Gore and Wiegant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? The next motion is to adopt an ordinance to rezone the parcel from RSB 20 to OPDC as stated. Thank you. Supervisors Gore and Wiegant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Item, fifth motion, or the fourth motion, is to approve a site design review agreement.
Second.
Supervisors Gore and Wiegant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? And the final motion is to approve a request to allow the buildings to be located thirty-five feet and forty-seven point five feet from the right-of-way of Douglas Boulevard, where a minimum setback of seventy-five feet is normally required, as allowed by the Granite Bay Community Plan. Thank you, Supervisors Gore and Wiegant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much, appreciate that item. We'll go to our eleven oh five timed item. This is found on page two twenty-three of our board packet. And this is the Placer Commerce Center General Plan, Area Plan Amendment. And Chris, welcome, our interim planning director. Chris Schmidt is here to present this item.
Thank you for the intro. Good morning, Supervisors. The project before you today is an application for a business park from Buzz Oats Construction. The project is located in the Sunset area and consists of nearly four hundred acres on the east and west sides of Foothills Boulevard North, south of Athens Avenue. The project site is currently vacant. As you can see, there is surrounding development nearby, including the landfill on the west, the casino to the northeast, some industrial properties, and a mitigation bank on the north side of Athens, and some large commercial industrial uses to the east. A few pictures of the project site, mostly grassland, recently used for kale grazing. Couple more pictures of the Athens-Foothills intersection. Land use designation is split, includes Innovation Center and Entertainment Mixed Use. To the south of the project site is the future Placer Parkway, and also the Placer One Project that you're seeing gray on this map. We do have split zoning. Innovation Center Special Purpose on the east side of North Foothills. And then there are Entertainment Mixed Use Special Purpose on the east, or I'm sorry, on the east side of Foothills and also on the west side. Innovation Center is on the western boundary of the site. So the proposed project includes approximately eighteen buildings. The site plan you see here is draft. The buildings range in size from one hundred sixty thousand square feet to a little over a million square feet. Includes up to six point four million square feet of flexible industrial space. Parking for over sixty-four hundred vehicles and over thirteen hundred tractor-trailers. There would also be a new public road in the southeast corner of the site. Here's a bird's eye of the proposed project looking to the southeast. So on the left here is Athens, the road cutting through his foothills. On the right would be the landfill, and just off the screen to the left would be the casino. So a few entitlements requested, including a general plan amendment to amend Table 1-1 of the Sunset Area Plan implementing zoning regulations to allow for limited additional uses along Foothills Boulevard North in the Entertainment Mixed Use zoning district. A second general plan, area plan amendment to modify the Sunset Area Plan corridor design standards and guidelines to reduce the ultimate width of Athens Avenue from the Casino Garage driveway to Foothills Boulevard North from six lanes to four lanes with a center landscape median, and also to allow for a center two-way left turn lane along the corridor where appropriate. The applicant is also seeking a master conditional use permit to allow the construction of a multi-building business park within the Innovation Center and Entertainment Mixed Use zoning districts and within the thousand-foot landfill buffer. And also a phased vesting tentative subdivision map to create individual parcels as needed as the project develops. And we'll walk through each of those here shortly. So the proposed project includes building space for a bunch of different tenant types, including R&amp;D, e-commerce fulfillment, warehousing, distribution, flex space, light industrial, and manufacturers. The applicant has estimated that build-out will include about five point one million square feet of warehouse space and one point two nine million square feet of R&amp;D space. The buildings have designed to be flexible, so it could be multi-tenant or one-tenant. Upon completion, the applicant estimates that between thirty-five hundred and five thousand new jobs will be created onsite, depending on the end-users. So the applicant is seeking an area plan amendment. So within the Entertainment Mixed Use Special Purpose zoning district, warehousing and distribution are not allowed. This district is designed to build off the casino and would typically include large-scale entertainment, shopping, amusement parks, lodging, recreational facilities, and also mixed-use residential properties. So the applicant is seeking approval to allow industrial subdivisions, manufacturing and assembly, printing and publishing, R&amp;D facilities, and warehouse, wholesaling, and distribution on its properties in the Entertainment Mixed Use Zone. So what we're doing is adding a footnote to the land use table that allows these uses in the Entertainment Mixed Use Zone, but only within twelve hundred feet of Foothills Boulevard North. So really specific to this property that you see in the yellow. And these are the only approved uses that would be allowed in the use permit. So what you see here is allowed in Entertainment Mixed Use and Innovation Center. No other uses that would typically be allowed in these districts are allowed under this use permit, so no residential development. We are allowing up to twenty thousand square feet of restaurant and fitness center use because we figure the future tenants would enjoy those type of uses within the project and not have to drive offsite. So here's the tentative subdivision map showing eighteen lots ranging from nine point three acres, which is Lot 16 on the east, to a little over sixty-two acres, Lot 11 in the north or southwest corner of the project site. And that's for the one million square foot buildings. So the project is adjacent to landfill property. There's a thousand-foot landfill buffer area in the Sunset Area Plan. It says you can't develop within this thousand-foot buffer without approval of a specific plan, a master plan, or in a development agreement. What we're proposing here is a Placer Commerce Center master conditional use permit to allow the industrial warehouse use within the thousand-foot buffer. And the buffer is measured from the property line of the landfill property, which is the western boundary of the site. This property is undeveloped. It says it may serve as a landfill expansion area, as Supervisor Gore noted last Thursday. The Solid Waste Management Authority approved expansion on the west side of Finiment, so not on the east or the west side of this project site. However, the condition of approval does still apply since they are adjacent to landfill property. So this condition is in the Sunset Area Plan. It calls for specific rules for building construction within that buffer, including a geomembrane installed between the slab and the ground, venting pipes constructed with the ability to be connected to an induced draft exhaust system, also installation of automatic methane gas sensors. And the building developer或operator would have to do periodic monitoring for methane gas. So the project is proposing four phases, basically developed from the south to the north and then to the east. Build-out is anticipated to be twenty years, but will be market-driven. The master plan design guidelines have been created to basically lay out what the project will look like aesthetically and also build out functionally, so that as it is completed, it will function as a complete comprehensive unit. This document will be adopted by reference in the project's conditions of approval. And that guideline document covers those issues listed A through K. So everything from architectural design, circulation, parking, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Here you can see the four conceptual, or three conceptual designs that are proposed for the project, a very modern corporate look. The master plan design guidelines also had development standards for their two zoning districts. Buildings are proposed to be twenty-four feet to forty-six feet tall, with some decorative elements a little taller, up to sixty-one feet. Just to note that the height limit within EMU zone is a hundred feet and a hundred fifty feet in the Innovation Center zone, so these are clearly under what could be built on the site. As they noted, parking is proposed for sixty-four hundred vehicles and thirteen hundred tractor-trailers. The applicant will also have to meet the electric vehicle charging requirements found in the area plan and what the state requires. Approximately nineteen and a half percent of the site will be landscaped, a minimum of thirty feet of landscaping along the public roads. They'll also be required to install fifty feet of landscaping along the future Placer Parkway to the south. So as you can imagine, a project of this size does have significant traffic generation, including a little over two thousand AM and PM peak hour trips, and a total of twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety daily trips. So we did do a vehicle mile travel analysis. And since this property, or the project, is going to be sitting on an Entertainment Mixed Use Zone site, the proposed uses are, generate less traffic than what could be built out there. So overall, this project reduces daily VMT in the Sunset Area Plan by nearly three percent. However, since there was significant unavoidable traffic impacts with the area plan, that three percent reduction doesn't get us out of significant unavoidable, so that condition remains unchanged. Access to the project would be off two main driveways off North Foothills Boulevard North. There would also be a signal installed at Athens and North Foothill Boulevard North. On Sunset, it'll be right turn out only, but full access into the site. The new public street will connect to vacant land owned by the tribe to the east. And also to the south is two of the Placer Ranch or Placer One large lot properties. And an EVA is proposed for Phase One, since there would be only one access out to Foothills in the interim period. So with the proposed land use changes, we did look at whether Athens needed to be a full six lanes. And with that EMU use reduction, it was determined that we didn't need the full six. So between the Casino Garage Drive and Industrial, it's currently six lanes in front of the casino. From the parking garage driveway to North Foothills, the plan calls for six. The traffic study said we can deal with traffic with four lanes, and that's what's proposed here, to allow for the four lane along that stretch. And then also a center turn lane is appropriate on the remainder of Athens. And this shows what that four lane looks like with a landscape median. The project would be served by water. The PCWA line in Athens would be extended south along Foothills to serve the development. Eventually, Placer Parkway will bring a significant water trunk line from the Whitney Ranch area in Rockland over into the Sunset area. In the trunk sewer system, the Placer One is scheduled to build, would serve this project. So that follows Foothills Boulevard to the north, and then to Athens over to Industrial. So treated sewer flow will go into the city of Roseville Pleasant Grove Treatment Plant. So offsite work include road transitions where the streets are wide and along the project frontages, but tapered to a newer, newer existing road with offsites that's on Athens and also North Foothills. The Placer Ranch project is expected to undertake building of most of the infrastructure needed by both projects in advance of this project's starting work. This includes lift stations in the Forest Main and North Foothills Boulevard to connect to the city of Roseville Treatment Plant. In the event the Placer Ranch does not start construction on the sewer trunk, Buzz Oats would have to build that prior to starting work on this project. So the four-hundred-acre site is mostly a vernal pool, about four hundred acres of both low, intermediate, and high vernal pools. Wet acreage on site. Both on and offsite, just nine point three six acres of wet acres, and that's mostly vernal pools and seasonal wetlands. There is a floodplain on the northeast corner of the site, three point five acres that will be completely avoided. You see that in the yellow, and the project is developed around those. So the proposed project is a covered activity under the PCCP, subject to applicable PCCP state and federal permits and impact fees. So the special habitation impact fees would apply to the proposed project to mitigate impacts to non-vernal pool seasonal wetlands. And the project will be required to apply for CARP authorization for impacts to wetlands. The applicant may also dedicate land in lieu for all or part of the mitigation fee requirement. So stormwater management, a lot of new and previous surface here. They are proposing to store most of that onsite. However, they are talking to the City of Lincoln and City of Roseville for offsite retention. If those talks don't come to fruition and they need to store it onsite, the proposed drainage basins would be deepened to address that. So a whole bunch of community facility districts annexations needed to serve the project, mostly traffic fees, sewer connection fees, transit service fees, et cetera. The county did conduct an environmental review, so an EIR was prepared for the Sunset Area Plan back in 2019. With the land use changes, we did look to see how that impacts, does it fall within what was analyzed in the EIR? So the SAP, Sunset Area Plan, was analyzed at a programmatic level. Feasible mitigation measures were identified and applied to both this project and the Placer Ranch project. And these were incorporated into a mitigation monitoring reporting program. So all applicable mitigation measures are applied to future projects, including Placer Commerce Center. The county has lead to determine that we needed an addendum to the EIR since the roadway whistler changes and also land use changes. So the purpose of that checklist and addendum is to characterize and compare the Placer Commerce Center project's consistency with the Sunset Area Plan, Placer Manic Specific Plan EIR, and to evaluate any inconsistencies, including site project-specific cultural resources, air quality, habitat, and other assessments. We did an analysis of traffic impacts, and also analysis of proposed with reduction of... of Athens Boulevard from six to four lanes. And then an analysis concluded that although minor technical changes or additions are necessary to the previously certified EIR, none of the conditions that would require a full environmental impact review were met, and the recommended and feasible mitigation measures previously adopted for the area plan have been included as conditions of approval for this project. The planning commission considered the project at its November seventeenth meeting. Issues raised by the public and commissioners included whether this project was deviating from what was anticipated in the entertainment mixed-use zoning district, wanted information on impacts of vernal pools, impacts to a radio tower facility located east of the site, how traffic would impact Highway sixty-five, what this does to the county's jobs housing balance, does it impact water pressure to the existing line on Athens and electrical service in the area, how this project connects to nearby residential areas in both the Placer Ranch project and also Lincoln and nearby Roseville and Rockland, and whether there was really demand for six million square feet of space. The planning commission did recommend the board approve the project as proposed, five-zero with two members absent. And with that, staff brings forward the planning commission's November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two recommendation that the board approve a following: adopt an addendum, which is attachment H, to the two thousand nineteen sunset area plan, Placer Ranch specific plan, EIR, prepared pursuant to CEQA. Also adopt a resolution to amend the sunset area plan to modify the sunset area plan corridor design guidelines or standards and guidelines to reduce the ultimate width of Athens Avenue from Casino Garage Drive to Fithills Boulevard North from six lanes to four lanes with a center landscape median, and to allow for a center two-way left turn lane along the corridor where appropriate, as shown in attachment after the staff report. Thirdly, adopt an ordinance to amend the sunset area plan implementing zoning regulations to allow for limited additional uses along Fithills Boulevard North in the entertainment mixed-use zoning district, as shown in attachment G of the staff report. Also approve the Placer Commerce Center Phase Vestia tentative sunset area map, which is attachment C, subject to the findings and proposed conditions of approval, found in the staff report packet, which is attachment I for your conditions of approval. And finally, approve the master conditional use permit to allow the construction of a multi-building business park within the innovation center and entertainment mixed-use zoning districts and within the thousand-foot landfill buffer, subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet, attachment I. And I should point out there was a mistake in the staff report where we do call for adoption of a resolution.
On item three. County Council just pointed it out to me.
So it talks about a resolution to adopt the addendum. There is no resolution, so we're just adopting the addendum.
That would be item two in the staff report.
Yeah, item three has the... Oh, okay. Oh, my agenda was already corrected. Okay. Thank you.
We did receive two letters of correspondence, one dated December seventh from the solid waste local test force, and then yesterday from WATMA, Western Placer Waste Management Authority, also sent in a comment letter. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have. Also point out that Environmental Review Committee is here, including Kitty Conkle from Floor Controls probably online, Amber Convoy from Public Works, Phil France from Engineering, Angel Green for air quality issues, Huey Nam from Environmental Engineering, and Environmental Health Services is here to talk about any questions made about the landfill buffer requirements.
Great. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Supervisor Gore?
Chris, thank you very much for the presentation. I have one question, and that's in regards to the traffic. And I understand that previously there were significant unavoidable impacts to the traffic based on the previous sunset industrial plan adopted, right? Does that include the Placer Parkway or is that without the Placer Parkway? Because I would anticipate that once we have the Placer Parkway, of course, it's going to take a while for that to be built, that that might change the patterns. But I don't know if that was included in the traffic analysis.
It was done in the future traffic analysis, so we didn't anticipate Placer Parkway.
It did or it did not?
It did.
It did?
Yes.
Okay.
So even with the three percent reduction, we're still significantly unavoidable for VMT.
For VMT?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes, hi, Chris. Thanks for that great report. Under public notices and referrals for comments on the first page of our board docs, it says that a public hearing notice was also published in the Sacramento Bee newspaper. And it says that in another agenda item in here. And I'm just wondering, I think there are a lot of Placer County residents that don't subscribe to the Bee any longer, and since it's in Placer County, is there any way we can add to that? Is publicizing in the Auburn Journal or the Roseville Tribune, the Auburn newspaper, something like that, so that Placer County residents might be able to get the public notice?
I can join in on that, Supervisor, if you'd like. So the clerk of the board's office is actually the ones responsible for handling the publishing, and we do that. We are required to publish in a newspaper of general circulation. The Sacramento Bee is currently who we have a BPO with, so we have shorter publishing deadlines, meaning that we can, you know, we don't have to submit to them as soon, and we do get a better cost for publishing with them. But I'd be happy to work with procurement to see if we can reach out to the Auburn Journal and see what they can offer so that we could get things like the Auburn Journal and Press Tribune and those other ones.
Yeah, since there are projects in Placer County, I think it's in the best interest of the county to make, to ensure that Placer County residents are notified via publications.
Yeah, we're happy to look into that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments or questions from the board members. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Sheridan Evans. I am a development manager with Buzz Oats Construction, and I'm the project applicant for the Placer Commerce Center. So we prepared a presentation just to introduce ourselves. Buzz Oats Construction, we are based out of Sacramento, downtown Sacramento to be exact. We've been in the region for seventy-five years, and we are a vertically integrated real estate company. So what that means is that we acquire raw land, we entitle it, we do the offsite improvements, onsite improvements, vertical construction, and then we lease the property out to an end user. So what that means is that when we go into our area, we tend to have long-term partnerships with the local jurisdictions as well as the communities. So as Chris had mentioned, our property is located at the Athens Avenue and Fithills Boulevard intersection, as seen and read there, adjacent to the landfill and nearby the Thunder Valley Casino for reference. And so on this slide here, we have, we show the future developments, future planned developments such as the Placer Parkway, Placer One facilities, the future Sac State Placer campus, as well as what used to be the western regional sanitary landfill expansion area. As Chris had noted, last Thursday, the landfill decided to expand further west on their western And so when we looked at this property, we thought to ourselves, what can we do to enhance the Placer County, enhance this region? And we looked at the history of the sunset industrial area plan and what is now the sunset area plan, and we thought to ourselves, you know, we want to bring industrial manufacturing jobs, primary wage jobs to this area, so what was the best way to do that? And so as you can see here, the Placer Commerce Center was what we envisioned. So we're proposing six point four million square feet of light industrial, flex, office space, research and development, and other commercial uses. And so as we all know, you know, during the time of COVID, you know, warehousing really ballooned, e-commerce ballooned, but the demand for industrial spaces in this region was already high before that. And so we looked at, we did a market analysis, and we did a demand forecast, and we found that the Placer Commerce Center would cover a large portion of existing demand as well as future demand for this region. And so our project has a few key objectives. I'll be brief with them. The primary one is to establish a major employment center that creates new jobs, primary wage jobs, that our project also hope to ensure compatibility with existing and planned adjacent uses, and also facilitate development of the circular economy with the landfill and the Sac State Placer Campus Center. And so here are just a few renderings of our buildings and what we plan here. As you can see, there is a lot of glass frontage. It's not just going to be, you know, four concrete walls. You know, it's very high-end facilities. And speaking of the circular economy, we did a tour with the WATMA landfill. We toured their facility. We saw their recycling and their MRF. And so we were really fascinated with this idea of the circular economy partnering with WATMA landfill, with Placer One, and also the Sac State campus as well. So our end users that we anticipate seeing here are manufacturing jobs, some light industrial, again, you know, warehousing, research and development, that sort of thing. Now, understanding the history of the sunset industrial area plan and also the sunset area plan, we know that in the past, the real roadblock to bringing projects here was the sewer system. And so Placer County, they made a very wise and honestly massive investment for the sewer system in order to bring future projects here. And so that really served as a catalyst to the Placer Commerce Center, as well as other projects in the area, such as Placer One. And as you see here, alongside with our sewer connection fees, water infrastructure, traffic impact fees, and other fees, we're looking at an estimated one hundred and twenty-five million dollar fee payout over the lifespan of this project. And so that's the Placer Commerce Center. I'm here if you have any questions. And I again want to thank Chris Schmidt, Michelle Kingsbury, all of the Placer County staff. You guys have been wonderful to work with. You know, we brought this project, well, we closed on this project and on the property in February of this year, and we immediately put forth an application, and we're here at the end of the year. So I just, I want to, you know, thank the staff, thank the county again for making this all possible. So thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, with the applicant's remarks, then we'll move on to opening our public hearing on this item. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item?
Good morning. Or yes, it's afternoon now. Good afternoon. You've been here a while.
Let's see if I can figure it out. Oh, I'm going to stand up. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Sue Ingle, and I'm here to represent the Solid Waste Task Force for Placer County. The task force is an advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors, and we review comment on proposed action or programs that affect the management of solid waste, the landfill, and recycling in Placer County at the request of this board, you guys. The four-hundred-acre project proposal is right next to the active landfill property and seeks to modify the existing land use buffer standards and allowing commercial and industrial development much closer to the landfill and MRF. We are concerned that allowing conflicting land use adjacent to the landfill will have adverse impacts. This plan did not adequately address odor issues. The task force recommends a long-term monitoring plan prepared by the developer and approved by the county that includes routine maintenance and monitoring systems and devices for both odor and methane gas. This is an additional ongoing expense of the life of each new building. So if you build a building, you will have to have it monitored. Who's going to pay for that? That could cost millions. The landfill and MRF are crucial public facilities. They provide the primary waste disposal and recycling services for the majority of Placer County. There are state requirements to meet recycling and diversion. The latest requirement, SB thirteen eighty-three, requires every jurisdiction to divert organic waste. Organic waste, such as food waste and composting, create a tremendous amount of odors. There are already a significant number of odor complaints, and that's at five thousand two hundred and eighty feet away from the landfill, and we're moving the buffer zone to zero feet. Encroaching development could hinder future expansion of the landfill and MRF. Currently, the authority is seeking approval for expansion plans of the landfill and the MRF to meet future disposal and recycling needs for our county. The project proposes five thousand people working onsite. It does not adequately address indoor air quality from odor generated from the landfill and the MRF. In summary, potential negative impacts of the landfill and MRF are due to encroachment could include the following: you could lose your regional control of trash and recycling. We could pay higher rates for all customers for disposal. There's risk to health and human safety, reduced ability to comply with solid waste laws. We would like you to read your advisory letter on this development. Now, I have another speech for you as Sue Ingle, a private citizen. Would you like that now?
Sure. Go right ahead. Keep going.
Okay. So again, I'm Sue Ingle. I have been on your Solid Waste Task Force for fifteen years. The Solid Waste Task Force is your advisory group for the landfill, and it's been that for the last thirty-two years. On matters dealing with waste and recycling, there are sixteen of us and most of the most educated, passionate, and career experts in trash, recycling, and landfill. There are representatives from each city, the planning commission, waste haulers, landfill, MRF operators. There's a lot of money in wages at our quarterly meetings. Did any of the board members, you guys, seek out your advisory group on this four-hundred-acre development? Well, the answer to that is no. And did you meet with the developer, Buzz Oats? Did you meet with the county staff? So since I've been on this for fifteen years, I can say that not once this board has sought out the advice from your advisory group on specific projects like the sunset area plan, which was a huge development. You should have had their input on that. So maybe the county doesn't want you to hear what we have to say. That's quite a possibility, because if they're making sure there's not enough public comment and public outreach, then they're making sure we don't have that ability. Because we met on November third, this came out on November fourth. We meet quarterly. We had two special session meetings. One of them, we did not meet a quorum. We finally got a quorum so we could give you a letter. So in conclusion, there is way too much to cover in three minutes, and I hope you took time to read our letter that was submitted to you. But by not mentioning anything about odor, I mean, is there magical thinking here between Buzz Oats and the county that if we don't say anything about odor, therefore it doesn't exist? I've been out at that landfill with you, Bonnie, three years ago when the aeration wasn't working on the sewage treatment ponds. It was so nasty, it gets in your hair, it puts a film on your clothes, on your car. Don't leave your windows open out at the MRF or the landfill. So what I'm saying is, unless you get the advice of your advisory So what I'm saying is, unless you get the advice of your advisory group, how can you sit here today and approve this project? This project stinks. Literally.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments on this item?
We have one on Zoom.
Okay, let's go to Zoom.
Mr. Garabedian, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian for Placer County tomorrow and Pacific Two American Divide. Well, you know, I've never thought of myself before, but when it comes to the planning decisions, I'm really a historian. I feel much more like a historian because in the future, people are going to wonder how the heck did this mess, the transportation mess and all these problems come about? And I just want to make sure that when they come back and look at the record, they see that you can't just say, oh, it was okay, and we just, you know, rubber standard, just like Greg McKenzie and the PCCP interpretations would have you do. Just, they described all the things they could do and showed maps of completely wiping out the agriculture and the vernal pool areas there. That's obviously their plan. But I think it's really, it's hard to know where to start. But let's start with what I pointed out at the planning commission. They did not show the Carvana project there. And they still don't. What are they lazy? Or is it a policy of just living in the past and only showing what the documents dealt with some years ago or in the recent past? They're not bringing up to date without them showing you where the Carvana project is and talking about it in the context of all the transportation headaches that this is now adding with the number of trucks and truck traffic in and out and changing the plan that you recently adopted. There's really no time to go into most of these points. So they, I mean, there's too many things to mention. They talk about the pipe, the water in, I believe that's the PCWA. They're a permittee of the PCCP too, the water source. They're not talking about the PCWA Southeast Pipeline and those kind of things planned. To say that this is a great report is simply false. You are being misled to say that that was a thorough report. It is false. It is not what you need to know to do this massive change to this area that is going to bring all this truck traffic in. And if they ever, ever build the Placer Parkway Freeway, it is going to be a nightmare of, now guaranteed, it was already a problem with the trucks. So the, I don't think you should proceed without, at least I'm showing you a map of where the Carvana thing is and how this, I don't, maybe I should just not say anything else except to call that, what is it, incompetence? They know it's a problem. They know that that area is changing rapidly in what they're approving there, and they're not showing it to you. It, like I said, it must be a policy of using reports from the past.
Your time is up, Mr. Garabedian. That's your three minutes.
I'll just close by saying that the other, the Regional University, EIR, described how all of the massive impacts that you have to look at when you look at the entire area. You have to look at the changes that are happening throughout the area.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. We understand, we understand. You've shared your comments.
... at a time.
Thank you.
So I hope that you do not act on, oppose this very strongly. Why shouldn't they come in here when they can do stuff here they cannot do anywhere else?
Yes, Mr. Garabedian, we're going to have to cut off your comments. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to address this? Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, on behalf of Buzz Oats Enterprises, I just want to address one comment that was made during public comment. The comment was made that we are right next to the active landfill. That is factually incorrect. The active landfill is a parcel away, nor will the parcel in between us be developed for landfill expansion, given the Watma Board's action last Thursday night to approve Concept Two and move forward with the western expansion and instead on this intervening parcel to have eco-industrial uses that would be compatible with uses on our property. So again, I want to make sure that you weren't under the impression, given the various maps and the excellent presentation from Mr. Schmidt, that we were next to, or now or in the future, will be next to active industrial, or active landfill uses. In fact, we will have an intervening parcel that will be far more than 1,000 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
I see none, Chair.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Staff, did you want to make any responses to any of those comments?
There were a few. The Solid Waste Task Force letter mentioned a change in the buffer standards of the area plan, and there is no change to the buffer standards. So the 2019 area plan does allow commercial development within 1,000 feet of the landfill property with approval of a specific plan, a master plan or development agreement. This project is proposing a master plan document. So with approval of that document, development of commercial space within a 1,000-foot buffer is allowed as the Sunset Area Plan does allow. The odor issues were significantly addressed in the Sunset Area Plan EIR. Methane gas monitoring is required under condition of Approval 133, but maybe even less necessary now that the landfill expansion is going to the west. The mention of Carvana not being shown in an aerial, that's because the aerials that we have are a little dated. So Carvana opened about a year ago, so it doesn't show that development, which is southeast of the project site.
Thank you.
If I could just add one thing to the questions about odor reduction measures. There also was a memorandum of understanding that was entered into between the county and Watma in 2019 specifically on the topic of odor-reducing measures that involves a surcharge for Sunset Area Plan residents and a development agreement fee for the Plaza Ranch project. So this is something the county and Watma have been actively working on together to address the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay, questions? Supervisor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question on what is the potential for Placer County as far as new houses go? Just kind of a ballpark figure. How many new homes will we be building within the next 10 to 20 years, do you think? I think the Sunset area is a potential of 8,000, and then...
As you know, the Sunset area is mostly commercial industrial space. However, we do allow mixed-use development in certain zoning districts. But it wasn't anticipated that there would be a significant housing or population.
And that's Plaza Ranch?
Plaza Ranch, I believe, is approved for 5,300 housing units.
Yes, Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Michelle Kingsbury with the Community Development Resource Agency. The net Sunset area outside of Plaza Ranch, we had in a holding capacity of residential units of approximately 2,500 residential units. We allowed that to support uses that may come out there that needed workforce housing, multifamily, things of that nature. And due to the adjacency of this site next door to the landfill, although the site immediately to the west is not currently planned for landfill expansion, we worked quite a bit with the Buzz Oats group. They're not proposing any residential uses, which would be more sensitive types of uses there. However, the Sunset area still has that holding capacity of about 2,500 units that can be used throughout. Plaza One has approximately 5,636 units that are planned within that development as well, and we're not proposing any changes there. So those capacities still remain.
Okay, and then, so I'm just thinking into the future of a potential addition of 7,000 or more homes. How is that going to impact our capacity and capability at the landfill? Will it have to grow?
Well, certainly with more residential units and more uses, there's more garbage. And so we looked at that in the 2019 area plan update regarding what the useful life of the landfill is, worked quite a bit with the landfill authority. And as Clayton mentioned, we did enter into MOU with them. We worked quite collaboratively with each other to address those impacts. But all that was discussed and analyzed within the original EIR. That was done in 2019.
Okay, so, you know, one of the concerns is that eventually, when all of the people move and buy houses and they move towards the nuisance of the landfill, you know, how many people are going to start complaining about the landfill? In the old days, when someone went to court over a nuisance next to their house, the courts found in favor of the nuisance and said it was there all along and you moved to the nuisance. But more and more now, courts are not siding with the nuisance. They're siding with the people who moved to the nuisance. I've just, it's just a concern. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but is the county considering these possibilities or probabilities, I suppose?
And staying on our agenda item, I'm not sure how, but does, do either of our colleagues on the Watma Board want to discuss your planning for that?
I'm going to let Mr. White.
I can answer it too, if you need me to.
So Michelle's here to correct me when I am wrong. 5,936 approximately, is that accurate?
It's 5,636. It was ingrained in my head.
So, you know, the general questions that have been raised, I think, have been exhaustively addressed by the county over 30 years, frankly. In the county's general plan update, which was adopted in 1995, there was a consideration for a massive mixed-use project in this area, and the general plan did not adopt that. It left it the way it was, which gave the county the opportunity to undertake planning for jobs creation, which was first the Sunset Industrial Area completed way back in 1997 and then updated more recently in the last couple of years concurrent with the Plaza Ranch project. And the idea was pretty simple, which was to set aside an area, take it out of risk of a massive mixed-use residential project, of which we have many proposed in the cities and in the county, or have. So that we had a place for jobs creation. And it was a strong move by the county. It was criticized a lot, but if nothing else, even though the area didn't develop that much over the ensuing 30 years, it wasn't converted into housing and therefore precluding the opportunity for heavy industry or other incompatibilities. So you can correct me on this one if I am wrong, but in the Sunset Area Plan, the Plaza Ranch project, of course, brings with it a California State University. And with that housing and the total project concept, so there was a trade-off, if you will, in the adoption of that plan to allow traditional residential housing in the Sunset area. But the housing that's provided in the innovation center zoning in the general plan in the Sunset area is not traditional housing, correct? It has to be something like a Google campus. It has to be filtered through the jobs creation that would be necessary if there was a concept for a high-tech type of company to want housing on-site. Does anybody disagree with that concept, is that that's the standard in the general plan, correct?
Correct. When we did the Sunset Area Plan update in 2019, it was important for any housing proposed in the net Sunset area, it would be a subordinate use to the main driver, which is the non-residential use, such as a campus. It'd be multifamily. We wouldn't look for any low-density residential. And it again is a subordinate use to support employee housing and things of that nature. I'll also note, as it relates to odor, we did work extensively with folks and during the area plan update in 2019, both the Sunset area has a mitigation requirement when there are residential uses, because that tends to be the sensitive use. There's a fee program set up where they pay a fee. Also in the Plaza One, also known as Plaza Ranch, in their development agreement and in the MOU that we executed with the landfill, that development, both on residential and non-residential uses pays a fee. And they also have their hauler contracts amended to also have another fee on top of that for those residential uses to support increased O and M costs. Those monies are meant, and we worked with the landfill authority to support odor-reducing technologies. And so within the area plan EIR, there is a great deal of discussion and a suite of types of odor-reducing technologies that those fees will support for the landfill authority to reduce the odor levels down to an agreeable level. And we worked quite extensively and negotiated with the landfill authority on that back in 2019. And so all those corresponding mitigation measures, including as Chris noted, and I believe in the landfill letter, it was noted as well, disclosure requirements too, are all included within the conditions of approval. So we respected that negotiation process.
Just to build on that, so the question, I think, in terms of policy driver, is absolute complete protection of the landfill, for sure, which I believe we were told in our last meeting now with the current plan is expected to last until 2,100. That's a couple of years out. And likely longer with increasing recycling efficiencies and burying less garbage. So in terms of policy in that area, which has been exhaustively master planned, it's about jobs creation and protecting the landfill. And with the Plaza Ranch project, we did in fact, for the first time, impose a fee specifically targeted towards odor reduction. Staff at the landfill has assured us that odor reduction can be implemented effectively at the landfill so that it will become more of an urban type of landfill operation than it has been in the past. And so I would just, to the two speakers that commented, I would take great exception that, one, we haven't considered those things, and then, secondly, that that area hasn't been exhaustively master planned, also within the context of the Placer County Conservation Plan, which is a landscape-scale plan for conservation that will allow permitting of these kinds of uses. I can't think of a place in the country that has been more thoroughly thought through and had greater specificity in planning implemented to in fact protect all of those concerns that have been raised.
And my only comment about that is, it's just my concern. I know this project is going up to 1,000 feet from the landfill, which is fine by all standards that are set. But with the rest of the area, I'm just concerned, and I want to make sure that we, you know, as the stewards, make sure we preserve that landfill. We don't landlock them so that it can never grow. I don't ever want to put us in that position. Even 75 years from now, I don't want to put the Board of Supervisors in a position where we have to find a new location for a new landfill.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Jones. Any other board member comments or questions? Not seeing any. Robert?
Just one last comment, and that is, you know, in 1997, we approved the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, now the Sunset Plan, and again, it was about preserving a place for jobs creation. And a lot of other things have occurred since that time. But for me, in conjunction with Placer County Conservation Plan, this is almost like a dream being presented to us. There were a lot of naysayers 30 years ago who thought that, one, the Sunset area would never be effective. And now I think particularly with this project, but also on the top of Plaza One project, which includes California State University, it will really be recognized as the business park for the whole Sacramento region. And we're talking about 5,000 potential jobs and focusing on primary or junior jobs, which provide benefits to families that are so necessary. I'm happy to proceed with making a series of motions if Chair's willing to let me do that.
Absolutely.
So I approve we adopt the addendum Attachment H to the 2019 Sunset Area Plan, Plaza Ranch, Pacific Plan EIR, prepared pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Supervisors Wiegant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay?
Move we adopt a resolution to amend the Sunset Area Plan, to modify the Sunset Area Plan corridor design standards and guidelines to reduce the ultimate width of Athens Road as discussed by staff.
Thank you, Supervisors Wiegant and Gore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes, any abstentions? Thank you.
Further move, we adopt an ordinance to amend the Sunset Area Plan implementing zoning regulation to allow for limited additional uses along Fith Hills Boulevard North in the entertainment mixed-use district. the entertainment mixed-use district as discussed by staff.
Thank you Supervisors Weigant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions?
Further move, that we approve the Placer Commerce Center phased vesting tentative subdivision map Attachment C, subject to the findings proposed, conditions of approval, uh, discussed by staff. Attachment F, or, excuse me, aye.
Thank you Supervisors Weigant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay?
And last, approve the master conditional use permit to allow the construction of a multi-building business park within the I C and E M U zoning districts, as discussed by staff, and, uh, with reference to the one-thousand-foot buffer, uh, for which now we're compliant.
Thank you Supervisors Weigant and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations on, uh, all of this process. It's an exciting day. Okay, we have a number of staff items, and we've had people patiently waiting all morning, so I want to get through these as, um, relatively quickly as we can in time management here, uh, from the chair. So we'll go immediately to item seven A, Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program Update Consulting Services Contract. Hi Jen.
Uh, good afternoon, Jennifer Bias, Planning Services Supervisor Weigant, you didn't think you can get away without talking about Placer Legacy one more time, but I'm gonna be very brief. Um, here, happy to present to you our update to the La- Placer Legacy Program. We have four action items to complete the kickoff of this process. Back in twenty-twenty-one, the board gave us direction to complete a strategic work program update with emphasis on funding option. Um, consistent with that direction, staff worked with the purchasing and completed the R F P process. We had one contractor submit, um, so we reviewed the, the proposal, and the proposal met the needs for the services required. So we're here today to move forward with selecting I C F as our contractor, and with a sub of Conservation Strategy Group to look at the funding sources. So I'm here to request your support in, uh, budget amendments to, um, move funding from the Open Space Fund. The funding amount is seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars into Planning Services and provide direction to, the Community Development Director to sign the contract, as well as make a determination that this action is exempt from CEQA, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you Jen, any questions, board members? Okay, any public comment on this item? Anyone online? Okay, we have four actions can be handled in one motion? Thank you Supervisors Weigant and Gore, and this is a roll call vote. Gore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Gustafson.
Yes. Next item is seven B, this is on supplemental agenda item, um, page one, and this is a loan agreement with H T B Saber City Park Estates and L L C.
I'll do a brief introduction, good morning again, Michelle Kingsbury from the Community Development Resource Agency, here with us today is Anne Marie Novotny, she's our housing specialist, who'll present the item before you today, um, and before she gets on her agenda item as we're restructuring and, and moving forward, um, with the different moves on the housing side, I just want to spay, pay of special recognition to both Anne Marie Novotny and Maggie Tides, who worked diligently to get this on the agenda for today. Thank you.
Thank you Michelle. I'm gonna give a little background and just, um, hit the highlights that are in the staff report. Housing Trust Placer is a nonprofit organization with the mission of facilitating affordable housing development and preservation in Placer County. H G P recently formed a single-member limited liability, H G P Saber L L C, to acquire and develop an affordable housing project. The project site is a three-point-seven-eight acre property located on Vandenberg Circle within the existing Saber City neighborhood in the Dry Creek West Placer area. H G P Saber is requesting a five million dollar loan from the county to support the acquisition and development of affordable housing on the property. H G P Saber is an escrow with the current owner and developer, Infinity Homes, to purchase the property for one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The county received an as-is appraisal valuing the property at one million three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Escrow is anticipated to close on December twenty-eighth. The property is partially entitled with an approved vesting tentative subdivision map and findings of substantial conformance which would allow H G P Saber to construct up to forty-four units. H G P Saber plans to develop twenty-two build-to-rent lots, each with a primary residence, there'll be a mix of two and three bedrooms, there might be a few four-bedroom units, and a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on most, if not all of the lots. This would bring the, the total unit up to, uh, forty-four units of deed-restricted affordable housing. Just want to make note that the current project was approved for only twenty-four single-family lots with only six, uh, required to be affordable units. The project will be a one-hundred percent affordable rental project with a regulatory agreement restricting household income to a maximum of eighty percent of the area median income, so that's for the lower-income households, uh, for at least fifty-five years. Uh, the housing product type that they are proposing to use are manufactured homes. Uh, they are more affordable, the average cost of a manufactured home is roughly half the cost of a site-built home, construction timeline is substantially reduced, homes can be ready for installation in sixty to seventy-five days from order, uh, there's also a lower construction risk, with the controlled environment of a factory setting reduces weather vandalism and other risks associated with onsite building. I'd like to note that the builder for this project has not yet been selected. Under the pros- proposed loan agreement, H G P Saber would be able to sell the units to promote affordable home ownership. Six units must be sold to households at or below low income, and the remaining units may be sold to households at or below moderate income. The total project cost is just over fifteen million dollars. The county's contribution is nearly six-point-eight million, or about forty-five percent of the total project costs. I mentioned part of that is the five million dollar loan request. Uh, H G P has received previous funds from the county of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that was through a funds management agreement that the board approved back in May twenty-twenty-one. Um, there's some additional funding that, um, is a potential allocation of one-point-three million dollars, and that's from the Riolo Vineyard Mason Trails Development, which is required to pay the county one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under an affordable housing agreement that has been executed with the county. This potential allocation would be subject to a future board action and a separate loan and security agreement, and I would like to make note that the Mason Trails funds will fall under the same county housing trust fund program and guidelines that the H G P loan is subject to. The county staff have, have reviewed a thirty-year cash flow pro forma, pro forma from H G P Saber, which conforms to industry standards. Uh, the terms of the loan are a five million dollar principal, a three percent interest per annum with a five-year grace period, it'll be fully amortized over fifty-five years, loan payments, uh, will be from residual project receipts, um, and this county loan will be insubordinated in second position to the senior permanent financing. Uh, the county housing trust fund loan committee met on three occasions, October thirty-first, November fourth, and November fifteenth, to ensure compliance with the housing trust fund guidelines. The committee reviewed the loan terms and determined it is consistent with the program guidelines and recommended approval of this loan. Just gonna make note that the, the loan committee is comprised of four county staff that are currently, uh, one is a C E O Principal Managed, Management Analyst, another, uh, person is from H H S Housing Authority Housing Supervisor, um, the C I D R Administrative Fiscal Officer, and we have one vacant, um, position, which is the C I D R Principal Management Analyst. This is a position that Michelle Kingsbury used to fill, uh, but she resigned, uh, once she got a promotion to C I D R Deputy Director. So this concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. We also have Dan Heldridge and Jim Bayless from H G P, um, are here, if you would like to have them address any questions about the, the project and the loan. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, board members, do you have any questions? Or comments? Okay? Okay Supervisor Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoons, excuse me.
Afternoon.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, we do have a couple of questions. Um, the loan, uh, for five million, is that to purchase the land or to build the homes or?
It's a poor, it's a roughly forty-five percent of the cost. I mentioned earlier that the, the cost of the land is one point, uh, one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then there'll be some other, um, pre-development costs to, to prepare it. They're in the staff report, we actually did more of a breakdown of how the costs are allocated.
I would, uh, just adding on to what Anne Marie mentioned, so there'll be a portion of the loan, which would be for the land acquisition, a portion of the loan would be a drawdown for pre-development expenses, design and things of that nature, and then a portion of the loan to order the modular units. Um, so it's broken down into kind of those three buckets.
Okay. Okay, so, um, twenty-two, the single-family, twenty-two lots for single families, and then there are gonna be A D U's on most of those, so the total of all of those are gonna be forty-four new single-family units?
Correct.
That's, that's what you're saying here?
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna be deed-restricted as affordable, as a condition of the loan? But then, it says under the proposed loan agreement, that they could, instead of rent them, they could sell them?
Correct, it's, it's, so it's a, they initially intend to have it as a rental project, which should be available to those earning eighty percent of the average median income or below. They've retained an option to potentially convert those units, obviously if there's renters there that would like to own their home, um, they retain an option that would be in the loan agreement to convert units to a for-sale product, which could be available, they've prorated it, as Anne Marie mentioned, to, uh, a certain number of units at a low-income level and a certain number of units at a moderate income level, a hundred and twenty percent of A M I, certainly to encourage homeownership and vest, and investment into a community where folks own, maintain, and have that vested interest, staff supported, kind of having those options available for them, but they intend to, at least for, you know, roughly the first ten years, to have it as a rental project.
If somebody purchases, or rents a house with an A D U, is that A D U theirs, or are the A D U's going to be handled completely separately from the people who reside in the home?
I, I know that, that, that will, initially, it'll be separate households unless they happen to know each other, but they would be, um, separate households.
Okay, you'll rent them separate, separately?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or sell separately? Okay, 'cause my only concern is that, that it said that the, the remaining single-family units, after the six units must be sold to households at or below low income, it says the remaining single-family units may be sold to households at or below moderate income. Is mo- at or below moderate income, does that still satisfy the condition of, um, of low income?
So at or below, certainly couldn't be a low-income residence, but it could be maximum of the moderate income level.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, the whole purpose is to build affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure those, that at or below moderate still qualify as the purpose of what we're building here?
Correct, and I would mention, these will all be deed-restricted, um, with those regulatory agreement covenants recorded on the land.
But then if someone purchases, the deeds, the restrictions will be removed?
And replaced?
Okay.
By a, a for-sale deed restriction.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
I'd like to correct one thing, Supervisor Jones, if a, if a lot is sold, if it becomes a for-sale product and a lot is sold, and an A D U is on that lot, that A D U cannot be sold separately, it goes with the lot. It can be rented separately and is anticipated to be rented separately, but when a parcel sells, it sells with the, the main structure and the A D U.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification, Campbell.
That's, that's how the A D U will go with the, the home.
And if you'd like to come up, Jim, you can come up and address this.
Thank you.
Jumping out of your seat.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Bayless with H T P, and I just want to make a couple of things clear. First of all, um, in the near term, this is strictly a rental project. We just asked for, to keep that option open at some point in the distant future, ten or twenty years away from now, where, um, the economics of the project and market conditions might make sense for it to convert to for-sale. So that's just keeping an option open in the, in the distant future. Now, if that does occur, the county loan will be paid off prorated, unit by unit. Okay? Now, the other question was about, there's twenty-two lots, and there's going to be forty-three, or forty-four homes. Okay? So if they're sold, our intent would be to sell each home separately, and to keep the, to keep the project affordable, you know, by design. Uh, obviously, a, a seven-hundred-and-some-square-foot accessory dwelling unit is going to be relatively affordable by that design. Um, and with respect to county council's comments, we have, we happen to have the good fortune of having on our board a couple of attorneys, and one of them, his expertise is in establishing homeowner associations and working with the Department of Real Estate. And he's explained to us that, as a nonprofit, we have two potential avenues for doing that. The first would be very much like selling a condo, where the buyer purchases and holds fee title in that dwelling unit, and then they hold a shared interest in that land. Okay? So that, that would be the first alternative. The second alternative is that, I don't know all the technical wording for it, but as a nonprofit, we would qualify, working with the county, to subdivide those lots, basically to split them, so that we could sell fee simple titles to each unit separately. And that would, that would be advantageous, because that would allow those buyers to qualify for HUD-backed financing.
So in other words, you could, the way, if, the way you have it planned, you could sell an A D U separate from the house?
Yes.
Because you're selling the structure, and then they have a, a shared, um...
We, we could do that based on the...
Used in the land or...
They have a, a shared interest in, in the lot. And, and we could do that under the existing entitlements. Obviously, converting that tentative map to a final map.
I might suggest, right now, as has been pointed out, the for-sale is an option. There are options, I'm fully aware of what, uh, Mr. Bayless is mentioning, but right now, under the subdivision map act, they would have to subdivide, and there may be potentials of future sale of those A D U's, but I want to bring the board back to the fact that right now, what we're talking about is a loan agreement, and it's a loan agreement, as staff has mentioned, for both the acquisition, the construction, um, for this particular project. We have, um, security in place for if it goes to a for-sale, uh, they would be paying down the loan, and we have provisions in place to ensure affordability. So I just want to pull this back to what we have in front of us today.
And I appreciate that, but these are terms of the, they're described as terms of the loan.
Well, that's correct.
So...
The terms of the loan are for the payment of the loan, obviously, when it comes to how an A D U in the future may be sold on its own, that will be a discussion, a, a future discussion, uh, with the property owner or the county, uh, but that's not germane to the discussion right now.
So then my only other question is, so the loan doesn't get paid back until they sell?
That, I would, I'm gonna jump in there, so, um, it's a fully amortized loan over fifty-five years, so as an example, if they retain just as a rental project for fifty-five years, they've amortized that loan over that period of time and would pay down it accordingly. There is, there will be an option in the loan agreement and the, uh, other types of documents, if they do so at a later date, choose to pursue a path of a for-sale product, and as council mentioned, great questions, a lot of detail that, that we can work out at that time as we're, um, you know, looking to how do we record the regulatory agreements, et cetera, in terms of the security, um, which staff looked at as well, as, um, council noted, it'd be in a subordinate... which staff looked at as well, as Council noted, it'd be in a subordinate position behind your permanent financing or lenders as a rental project. If converted at a later date to a for-sale product, they would pay down that prorata portion associated with each lot. So they, we've thought through each combination. But as Council noted, a lot of details, if they choose that option down the road, we can work out.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. There are four actions and one motion.
May I just make a comment before we move forward?
Yes.
I first want to say, I am so pleased to see this project move forward. This is a project in an area that a local developer thought he could get some infill affordable housing built, and he wasn't able to do it. And Housing Trust Placer jumped on an opportunity to actually bring twice as many affordable homes to that area. It's going to clean up the area. It's going to provide homes for residents in the West Placer area. I think this is the type of project we want Housing Trust Placer to do, which is use some county funds, use some developer funds from the real o-vineyard specific plan, leverage some grant funding. I am just so pleased to be able to support this project because we're going to be able to provide homes for people in West Placer where we've got a lot of development for people to live and work in, in our community. So I want to just say thank you to our staff who've worked really hard. And thank you to the Housing Trust Placer team who worked to get this done. I look forward to more projects like this in the future. And I do want to note as well that we set aside money from the ARPA dollars for homelessness and affordable housing. With this $5 million loan from those dollars, it does leave a balance of 2.5 million. And I just share with my colleagues that I hope that we can use that for some more homeless needs. This is a good affordable housing, but I know there are some other needs that we may want to use these for, for homeless. And so with that, I would like to go ahead and move approval of the loan agreement. And do I need to take each one individually? No, so I want to go ahead and move approval of all the items for the project.
Thank you Supervisor Gore and Holmes. This is a roll call vote.
Gore?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye. And I want to agree. Thank you Housing Trust Placer and our innovative and creative staff that made something happen. Thank you. Yes Supervisor Jones?
May I make one other comment? I just want people to understand, my questions had nothing to do with my not believing in your project. It was solely for my understanding and clarification. And I appreciate your answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, we're going to keep moving right along, please. Facilities management, item 8A, found on page 745 of our packet. And I apologize for this, but we have a big day today.
I'll try to get to this.
Another timed item.
Absolutely. I'll try to get this pretty quickly. Thank you very much Chair Gustafson, members of the board. I'm Dan Richards with Capital Improvements. Also have here with me today is civil engineer on our project, Dave Richard, in case he's needed to answer some questions. What we bring for you today is the award of bid to Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering from Cameron Park. And this is for the Placer County Government Center Water Sewer Stormwater Improvement Project. We also call it Tier One. So we have three action item requests of you today. The first is to award the Placer County Government Center Water Sewer and Stormwater Improvement Project to Doug Veerkamp Engineering, General Engineering out of Cameron Park in the amount of $12,099,945. Also to authorize Director of Facilities Management or Designee to execute the contract, the construction contract, subject to approval by County Council and Risk Management. And to delegate authority to Director of Facilities Management or Designee to approve any necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed $210,000, which is consistent with Public Contracting Code. Our second action request of you is to approve a fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment to increase appropriations in the general fund contribution to facilities and infrastructure and to cancel general fund capital reserves in the amount of $3,177,950 and increase appropriations in the capital, facilities capital project PJ00955. And that's for the PCGC infrastructure project by $3,177,950, offset by a contribution from the general fund. Third, we'd like to bring for you, determine that the proposed contract actions are each consistent with the certified master plan for the PCGC, FINLIR, and exempt from environmental review under CEQA, and that the requested budget action is also exempt from environmental review under CEQA. A little bit of background on the project. We saw you last on September 13th, and this was, we brought forth the plans and specifications and asked for your request and authorization to take this out to bid. We worked with Capital Improvements, worked with Procurement Services and released, we released a bid solicitation on September 22nd in accordance with the Public Contracting Code. On September 28th, we conducted a pre-bid job walk with, I think, about six or seven potential bidders. Bids were due and opened on November 9th, 2022, and resulted in three bid proposals. And you have that as part of your bid tabulation sheet within the board memo. Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering out of Cameron Park was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with a bid in the amount of $10,999,945. The difference between the lowest responsible bid amount and the original cost estimate for this project is $3,945. Based on the proposed award of the bid, the revised cost estimate for the entire project will be $14,290,462. And this includes the bid amount of $10,999,945 for construction and $3,290,517 for design consultant fees, overhead, management and contingencies. This project is essential to the delivery of the Health and Human Services Centers for their hookups of utilities. And in order to proceed, it is recommended that your board award the bid of this project to Doug Veerkamp General Engineering, Incorporated, authorize Director of Facilities Management or Designee to execute the construction contract not to exceed $12,099,945, which includes an owner-controlled contingency of $1,100, I'm sorry, $1,100,000. And to give the authority to approve any necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed $210,000 and approve a fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment. Regarding environmental impact, the project was evaluated under CEQA as part of the PCGC master plan, FINLIR, and both the proposed contract actions and budget action is exempt from CEQA. Regarding the fiscal impact on this project, based on the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the total estimated project cost for the PCGC infrastructure project is $14,290,462. The budget increase required to provide sufficient funding for the remainder of the budget for the revised cost estimate is $3,177,950. A fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment to increase appropriations by $3,177,950 in facilities capital project PJ00955, which is our infrastructure project, offset by contribution from the general fund, is for your board's consideration and approval today. To facilitate this transfer, the budget amendment also provides an increase in general fund contribution to facilities, infrastructure in the amount of $3,177,950 with corresponding cancellation of the general fund reserves. This creates a $3,177,950 impact on the general fund. That sort of concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
You have questions?
Appreciate that, Dan.
Yes.
Board members have any comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. I'll just say it's right before the holidays and lunch, but I hope that as we design projects, we take a very close look at how the engineer's estimate came in so far off, especially in these times. So for the future, I don't like to see these kind of blowups on a budget. That's pretty significant, like 50% increase.
Yes ma'am, note taken.
Yep, note taken. Any public comment on this item?
I see none, Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion? Thank you. And this requires a roll call vote.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Okay, item B.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. And I was just going to say congratulations and best wishes to Supervisor Wiegand. So it's in the record.
We've been going at it for a while. It's this morning, sorry.
All right. Well, I do have two agreements, facilities agreements with Placer County Water Agency for the new PCGC water infrastructure that your board just approved. We've been working very closely. So we've got two actions on that today to approve, authorize our facilities management director to move forward with the agreements and determine that the actions today are consistent and exempt from CEQA. So the agreements today are basically for our PCGC water infrastructure to be built to PCWA standards. So as we move forward, we're getting close, hopefully within the next five years, to hand over that system to PCWA. We're currently where the water purveyor at the PCGC, that this system, new system and investment in the campus will allow us eventually to get there. So these two facilities agreements are for testing, inspections, oversight and some fees that are covered in the Tier One infrastructure project for us to get to a place where PCWA is very close to taking the system over. So with that, you've got two action items requested. I'll take any questions.
Thank you Paul. Any questions or comments, board members? Any public comment on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion. Thank you Supervisors Gore and Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 9A. This is found on page 781 of our packet. Amy Ellis is here for a contract amendment with AMI Housing.
Yes. Hi, good morning or good afternoon, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. Amy Ellis, Director of the Adult System of Care. And I also have with me Aaron Kador. He's the Housing Manager in Adult System of Care. And available on Zoom if needed is Jennifer Price. I think she's going to raise her hand too, in case there are questions for her. I have two action items for your consideration this afternoon. First, to approve an amendment with Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing Incorporated Mental Health Services Act Housing Support Programs Agreement to add $227,000 for a total amount not to exceed $2,282,385 for the entire period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. And authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the amendment with Risk Management and County Council concurrence and to sign subsequent amendments up to $100,000, consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work with Risk Management and County Council concurrence. The second, to approve the deed restriction for, to AMI in favor of the county for any property purchased by AMI with county funds for a 55-year period from recordation and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to accept and sign the deed restrictions with Risk Management and County Council concurrence. So Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing provide a vital emergency housing support program. And this is part of our crisis continuum. So it's referred to as Monarch House. This house is a collaboration between AMI and the Adult System of Care, and it initiated in 2014. This, it says five-bedroom in your background, but it's actually a four-bedroom house. And it provides up to two weeks of respite for individuals in crisis. Oftentimes, these individuals are found and located by our mobile crisis team, who then works to be able to engage them in Monarch House as part of their plan to remain safe. This program has one staff onsite at all times and provides support. Each participant also receives support from the Adult System of Care during their stay and continued follow-up and engagement into services. The inclusion of these funds within the contract will allow AMI to purchase this existing property to continue operations from this established location. So this location, it's close to Kirby Hills, it's accessible for placement staff, and there has been very little to no concerns at this site over the years. It has been successfully operating within the community for eight years. The home was previously being rented to AMI, and the owner now desires to sell the property. Purchase is the only way to ensure the program continues. AMI received a majority of the funding needed through the city of Roseville, who passed one of their council last week, to use CDBG funds or HUD funding. The county is, would be supplying 37% of the cost to purchase the location, ensure that, and ensure that this crucial mental health resource remains available to the community during this time of mental health crisis and support the city's investment. It also reduces the amount of ongoing operation costs to the program that was formerly being paid as rent. There will be no change to the use of the site, which was, has been successfully being operated since 2014. The total cost of this contract is $2,282,385. The increase proposed today of $227,000. For this amendment, it's funded through Mental Health Services Act and has been budgeted appropriate. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you Amy. Any questions, board members? Any comments? Yes Supervisor Jones?
Hi Amy, thank you so much for that. In our little chat yesterday, you told me you were going to inquire about any complaints that you had had on this facility in the past.
Yeah, so I did. And there were, in the very beginning, there was some residents that was concerned. They had a meeting with my, one of my staff and Jennifer Price went and had a meeting with local residents. And by the end of that meeting, people seemed to better understand the program and who they could call if there were challenges. And really, there have not been any calls or complaints in over two years. And as the city was also looking to invest funds, they looked into this and also found no calls for service to their law enforcement officers as well.
Okay, great. So you don't have an issue, since it's a temporary facility, you don't have any issue with folks, once they've had their two weeks or whatever, and they cycle out? You don't have any problem with them lingering around because now they're, it's familiar territory to them or?
Yeah, no, not with this type of a
Do you help place them afterwards?
Yeah, well, they're not all homeless. So actually, a smaller percentage of individuals using this program are experiencing homelessness. A majority of individuals using this are just, like, they're being outreach by mobile crisis, which means they're experiencing a mental health emergency. And they need a different, like, alternative place to kind of have some respite and to refocus and to work through their mental health challenges. And then they go back to the situations they came from. If they are homeless, we absolutely do work with them to engage them in services and housing and try to get them signed up for anything that they're qualified for.
Right, okay. Thank you Amy for finding that information out for me.
I'm not seeing any other lights come on, so we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Holmes and Gore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Then we'll move on to item B. And this is the joint application for Department of Healthcare Services, CAL-AIM, Providing Access and Transforming Health Round Two Funding. Hi Greg.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I am Greg Geisler. I am the Deputy Director of Health and Human Services for the Human Services Division. And I'm before your board this morning to request that you authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign and submit the application to the Department of Healthcare Services for the California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal, CAL-AIM, Providing Access and Transforming Health Path Round Two Funding for an amount not to exceed $1.7 million. And authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and related documentation with Risk Management and County Council concurrence and to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed $100,000, again with Risk Management and County Council concurrence. Background on this item, California Statute AB 133 mandates that all mandates that all counties implement pre-release Medi-Cal enrollment processes by January 1st, 2023. Establishing pre-release Medi-Cal enrollment processes is part of the state's vision to enhance Medi-Cal health care delivery system for justice involved populations. We already have a process in place here in Placer between Human Services and the jail, and very proud of that process. So we're a little ahead of the game. But per Department of Healthcare Services requirements, this will be a collaborative application involving Human Services, the Sheriff's Department Correction Division and the Department of Probation. Each agency will be allocated a specified amount determined by the Department of Healthcare Services formulary. Path Justice Involved Capacity Building Program Phase Two Funding will allow for the implementation and modification and upgrades of our current pre-release Medi-Cal application and suspension process, and funding will be utilized for development and modification to supporting IT systems. Funding may potentially be used for staff training or the implementation of new staff position. If funding is received, the funding will be included in the budget at that time. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any questions? Supervisor Holmes's light is on, but I think it's because he was covering. Okay, no questions here. Are there any public comments on this item? I'm not seen here or on Zoom. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion? I think I have Supervisor Holmes and Wiegand. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10A, found on page 785 of our board packet. And this is Suzanne Holloway coming up to address us on a couple of classification compensation changes.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair, and congratulations to Supervisor Wiegand. Before you today is an update to amend the Uncodified Schedule Classifications and Compensation Ordinance. This is on behalf of two departments in the county, Public Works and HHS. The first item is to expand the Public Health Epidemiologist Classification. Right now, it's a single-level classification, and we are looking to expand that to include both an entry and a journey level. This has always been a very important position, but in the last two to three years, it's become especially critical for the department. There is a salary update that is also associated with this request to allow for the lower-level entry level, and this will support the department's recruitment and succession planning efforts. The second item for you is a follow-up from a prior item last summer where we created the Electrical Instrumentation and Control Technician Series. You may recall that back with, on behalf of the Utility Operations Division of Public Works. In order to maintain the requisite 10% salary difference between the supervisor and their highest-paid subordinate, we are requesting a salary adjustment for the utility operations supervisor as that position does oversee the highest level in that series. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Suzanne. Are there any questions? Not seen any. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seen. I'll bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion to approve this item? Thank you, Supervisors Wiegand and Gore. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Suzanne. And now on to 10B, found on page 789 of our board packet. These are salary adjustments for the Local Agency Formation Commission, Executive Officer and Director of the Air Pollution Control District.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Again, I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. Before you today is a request to consider an ordinance amending your schedule of classifications and compensation to reflect the salaries for the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, Executive Officer, as well as the Director of Air Pollution Control. Those salaries are set by their respective governing bodies. And that's the case for a small handful of special districts where the county has classifications that are actually controlled by separate governing bodies, which is the case here. This fall, each of those boards approved salary adjustments for their contracted executives, including a 22% adjustment to the salary range for LAFCO, and a cumulative adjustment of about 29% over five years for Air Pollution Control. Just a note, pursuant to your agreement with Air Pollution Control, your board approved the contract for the Director at your November 29th meeting. And also another note, while the LAFCO salary range is being adjusted by 22%, the actual impact to the employee is about 8% at this time, with additional room to grow in the salary range. Both entities have distinct funding sources that are separate and apart from the County General Fund, and any budgetary impacts must be addressed by those districts. The county is required to maintain a publicly available pay schedule for all classifications. So the proposed ordinance today is really a ministerial update to reflect the decisions by those bodies. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Seen none. Is there any public comment on either of these items? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, Supervisor Holmes and Wiegand. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Phil, we're on to item 11A, page 797 of our board packet. That's gotta be right up there. And this is on the parking ordinance update.
Yeah, good afternoon, board members and Madam Chair. Phil Vashen with the Department of Public Works, bringing this item back to you again. Introducing an ordinance and waiving oral reading of an ordinance continued from December 6th to amend provisions of Chapter 10, Article 10.12 of the Placer County Code Regarding Parking Restrictions. The ordinance was previously introduced on November 29th, was brought forth for adoption on December 6th. It was continued based upon our revisions to Pastor Drive. We have since been in communication with the HOA President for the Enclave. He wanted that item pulled altogether from the ordinance, Pastor Drive, to revisit some other options that we can give to him in the future. And there have been no other changes to the ordinance, so with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Phil. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Supervisor Gore. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, then I'll come back to the board.
And so now I would actually like to give Mr. Wiegand the opportunity to make his last motion as a supervisor, because we have one more, but I don't think we're gonna-
Put him on the spot for that one?
Move approval.
Thank you, Supervisors Wiegand and Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thank you very much, Phil. And now we're going to move to closed session. Just a timing update. I know that we're planning to be back by two. We might be a few minutes late if there's anybody staying around for this little thing we're doing this afternoon, but we'll try to be back as promptly as possible. So with that, County Council?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider three items of anticipated litigation and one item of labor negotiations.
The Board of Supervisors of Placer County will reconvene, and County Council will give us our report out of closed session.
I could tell you how I feel. We're in a cowboy hat, Jane, though. Bear with me, right? The board met in closed- The board met in closed session and considered three items of anticipated litigation. On each one of these potential cases, the board heard a report. No action was requested or taken. The board then conducted a conference with labor negotiators. The board heard a report and provided direction on a 5-0 vote. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And now we are on to our 2:00 PM-timed item six on our agenda. And this is a resolution recognizing Supervisor Robert Wiegand. And for the public who's joining us, we're going to have a little fun with this afternoon for Supervisor Wiegand. And so with that, we're going to go out of our normal order and go to some presentations. First, we're going to start with the Placer Land Trust.
I'm Fred Jaeger. I'm here on behalf of Placer Land Trust, and we're here to congratulate Robert Wiegand on his years of service to the people of Placer County, and of course, on his impending retirement, which happens pretty soon. Robert has served the people of this county well. His sincere concern for protecting what makes the county the great place that it is has been a consistent theme of his during his many years of service. He's done a commendable job, and even better than that, of balancing business and economic growth with the need for housing and protection of agricultural, open space and recreational lands. He's supported innovative programs that protect the environment while at the same time assist with economic development. Placer Land Trust's primary interest is in protecting open spaces, agricultural land, recreational land, as well as varied natural habitats. County's continued support for such an effort is due in part to Robert's common sense approach to balancing interests and taking a long-term view of what is best for the county. We at Placer Land Trust are pleased to have the county as a partner in these efforts, and now have many success stories that we can point to to demonstrate how that partnership has been so successful and the value in general of public and private, even nonprofit partnerships. Without Robert's long-term view and support, I wonder how much of this really would have happened. Thank you, Robert, for all of your hard work and dedication to the people of Placer County. Your service has left a great impact that will be appreciated by my kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids, and all of yours. So thank you very much. The Board of Directors of Placer Land Trust has adopted a resolution, and I'm not going to read it, but I am going to quote a couple parts, recognizes the following. First, Supervisor Wiegand was one of the early leaders in promoting and adopting the Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program, and that was done in the year 2000. Supervisor Wiegand was the champion of the 20-year effort to implement Placer County Conservation Plan, and as a reminder, that was adopted on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2021. This plan balances development and conservation in western Placer County and has a 50-year horizon. Most of us won't be around. Under Supervisor Wiegand's leadership, Placer County has worked closely with Placer Land Trust and with other nonprofit conservation organizations to implement Placer Legacy and the Conservation Plan objectives, including partnering with Placer County on conservation acquisitions with 15 willing landowners, and those alone, and that's just where Placer Land Trust and the county partnered, those alone have permanently protected over 3,500 acres in Placer County. In honor of you, Robert, and all that you've done, Land Trust is pleased to announce that we have renamed one of our preserves as the, get this right, the Wiegand Dode Ravine Preserve. This 427-acre site happens to be only a few miles from the Wiegand Ranch where Robert grew up. It's a beautiful wetland among vast agricultural lands grazing, and it's the site of significant and somewhat experimental habitat restoration efforts that are ongoing and will be ongoing for some time, thanks to the endowments for that particular site. We are pleased to permanently recognize your work in this way, and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
Next up, I believe we have Kim Pruitt from Congressman McClintock's office.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Congressman Tom McClintock and Congressman Doug Lamalfa, we're here today to honor Robert Wiegand's many, many years of public service to Placer County. We do have an extension of remarks that the congressman put into the record. So I can read a little bit of this, but I mostly wanted to come up and say thank you for all that you've done for the citizens of Placer County. Your legacy is your legacy. What you've done with the Placer County Conservation Plan, Highway 65, and so many other things will live on forever in Placer County, and you did that. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of Congressman McClintock and Lamalfa for your service not only to Placer County, to the state of California, and to your country. And congratulations on your retirement.
Okay, next up, we have CAL FIRE, Placer County Fire.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, Supervisor Wiegand. Brian Estes, State and County Fire Chief, and thank you very much for allowing us just a couple minutes. Robert, just personally and professionally, I want to thank you first professionally for your support of the Placer County Fire Department and CAL FIRE. In my tenure as the Fire Chief, it's been a pleasure to get to know you and, you know, your mentorship. I think you and I could probably sit down and tell stories for hours on end, and I really enjoy that about you. You're a very honest, very genuine person, and you've provided a lot of mentorship to me, and I very, very much appreciate that from a professional standpoint. On behalf of the County Fire Department and CAL FIRE, we have a presentation for you. And as you well know, in 1952, the very first agreement between the County of Placer and the Division of Forestry back then was established in what is now the City of Lincoln and in your district with one person-staffed fire engine staffed five days a week, 24 hours a day. And that was the first, you know, determined effort by the county and our agency to provide fire protection to your vast district in the areas that we continue to serve to this day. And that station has moved three different times to where it is now on Wise Road, serving the greater areas of your district, and Thermal Lands, and Sheridan, and Page, and Wise Road. I'm proud to announce that, you know, 70 years later, we now have an Advanced Life Support Paramedic Engine Company proudly serving as part of the regional service in your district as well as all of your partners' districts. So on behalf of the Fire Department, thank you very much. We hope and wish you a very healthy and happy retirement. And we would like to present you with this piece of artwork, which is Engine 70 at Lincoln Wise Road Station 70 with both the Placer County patch and the CAL FIRE patch. So, thank you.
Great, and so those were the individuals or organizations that had requested to present. And now I'd like to open it up to anyone else, and I would start with any of our electeds or former electeds, if you would like to come forward and make any remarks, and then we'll go to the remainder of staff and public. No, it isn't.
Jim Williams, both representing myself-
Jim Williams, both representing myself and as the incoming President of the S.P. Mud Board. First of all, we did forward a resolution of our board commending your years of service. I'm amazed that you have stayed this long. I've been trying to talk you out of it for every election since 2002, I think. One other thing I would like to say is that after I left this board and I was asked to fill a position on the S.P. Mud Board, I have been sort of re-elected every year since. However, my campaign has always been, if you run against me, I will support you. And nobody ever has, so technically, this board has kind of had to do the election every year. So I was going to say darn you for that, but I don't even know if you actually voted to approve me for another term on that board. But, Robert, it's been incredible. Now you have more time to answer the text chain that we're in and actually bring us your relevant comments, and I'm looking forward to them. So, there are a lot of stories that I could tell, but we'll have to do that on another time because this is a public meeting, and I don't want to put that out there, even though he's not running anymore. But, Robert, thank you for all your service. It's been incredible.
We'll stick with the theme of District Four Has-Beens. How's that? Kirk Euler, former member of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Before I start, just by show of hands, how many of you are actually here to make sure he's really leaving? Most of you are lying. Most of you are lying. So, I was talking with Sheriff Wu, and he was going to come up and make a presentation, but since the firefighter showed up with a really pretty picture, he was a little embarrassed because he was actually going to present you with a Glock, and he didn't know if this would be the right time for that. So, actually, Robert, I'm going to do something that you haven't done in 28 years. I'm going to be brief. For me, I'm sorry.
There's tissue there, too, Kirk. We made sure there were extra.
It's difficult for me to believe that the next time I walk in here, you won't be You have been a fixture in my life from a very young man when we worked together the first time, up through my last time when I left these chambers. Placer County is the better for your service, and I'm the better for your friendship. Thank you.
Christ, I've had to follow this guy like for the last 50 years. How am I supposed to follow that? Ryan Ronco, you are Placer County Clerk, Recorder, Registrar, Voters. Super excited to be able to be here and enjoy this moment with you, which must be difficult, but I hope you know how much you have impacted and touched all of the lives of the people that are behind me and people that can't be here, and even some people who don't know all the accomplishments that we've been talking about, that you are a part of. I want to thank you on behalf of my office and my predecessor for being such a stalwart supporter of the elections office and what we do there. I don't have a river I can name after you, unfortunately. However, if you have a moment in your hopefully less busy schedule in the next few days, and you look at the certification documents that we have posted online in our office, you will see that we dedicated the statement of vote that we certified for this past election in your honor, for which we have only done that to two other people. I just wanted you to know that you meant that much to us. So, thank you very much. And apparently, I don't know if I'm representing all the electeds here, they're so shy, they don't want to come up here, but thank you on behalf of all of us for being there for us. Thank you.
Robert, I just wanted to say personally, thank you. Thank you, you just have always been, Ryan said the word that I was thinking while I was sitting down, stalwart, always there, always consistent. A lot behind the scenes, just making sure that things go day-to-day that people don't even realize. And then there are the more monumental things and the more heavy-lifting things. You have been behind the sunset area for as long as I can remember, probably going back to when you were on the Economic Development Board and the Planning Commission, and that is so important and will be so important for the future of this county, and I think that's one of the places where you have a fingerprint that will have a lasting legacy. Speaking of legacy, Placer Legacy. And I was so glad and so heartened because I have thought over the years, on many occasion, when I've been out riding my horse in certain areas of the county where I know you've been responsible preserving, thinking someday, I hope that Robert is honored with his name on an area. So I'm really glad to see that the Land Trust did that. You have been so proactive and visionary and forward-thinking when it comes to wastewater and waste management with your service on the Western Placer Waste Management Authority Board and also with Lincoln, and I really enjoyed working with you on certain aspects of those, of course, financing, right, of those projects. And to see so much of this starting to bear fruit, you know, I hope you're able to relax and enjoy it and watch in the coming years because I think we're on the precipice of bearing fruit of the soil that you have tilled for decades. And so, thank you, and I think Fred said it well when he said, "Our children, grandchildren, and beyond will be the beneficiaries of your work for decades and decades to come." So, and thank you personally for all your support over the years. I've tremendously enjoyed working with you. Enjoy your retirement.
Yeah, I was going to have a mock complaint generated with your name on it, but nobody likes that, so. Good afternoon, Morgan Guyer, your District Attorney. From a personal standpoint, I want to congratulate you and thank you. You and the rest of this board's decision changed the course of my life personally, and I would like to think the direction of the District Attorney's Office for the better. Our first conversation back in the recruitment process for DA, we had a discussion about the many various forms justice comes in, and I thought your comments were particularly sophisticated and enlightened for someone who doesn't work in the criminal justice system. You had a true grasp of all of the different complexities that go into obtaining justice for people within our community, whether that is the hammer, whether it's the carrot or the stick or anything in between. You have a true grasp of the complexities of the human condition, and that is the best we can ask for in leadership from our county, from the District Attorney's perspective. So on behalf of our entire office, we wish you a hearty congratulations on a absolutely stellar career of public service for being a decent and honorable public servant. We will miss you, but we wish you the best in a very long, happy retirement. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Wayne Wu, you're Placer County Sheriff. So not only did I have to order the undersheriff to give you his duty weapon, I don't know what the capacity is on the roof of that fire truck, but Falcon 30 is on its way to land out there on top of the fire engine that's parked out front. We ordered it up as soon as I pulled in and saw the fire engine out there. Anyway, it's an honor and a privilege to stand here in front of you today and congratulate you on a job well done. I lateraled the Placer County Sheriff's Office in 1994. I think you started your career with the county and on the board around that same time, and when I think back about not just the changes the county has seen with growth and the way the county has evolved, but the changes the criminal justice has seen and what we've gone through as a community with AB 109 and all the reforms that have been passed down from the state of California, and your steadfast support for the men and women in the sheriff's office and for public safety in Placer County has been second to none. Your contributions have definitely contributed to the high quality of life that we enjoy here in Placer County and your support for public safety, and I truly appreciate it. So on behalf of the men and women of the sheriff's office, past sheriffs, and myself, thank you very much and congratulations.
Yes, my name is, maybe one story. Primo Santini, not here. I am a former council member of the City of Lincoln and also currently serve on the Placer County Water Agency Board, but I'm just here as a friend of Supervisor Weigant today. There's a story that I wanted to tell you, Robert. I don't know if you remember some of the fishing trips we took to Idaho, probably in the 90s, and it was one of the trips you rode in the car with me. I was driving, and my wife Becky hadn't really spent a lot of time with you, so she was in the car also that trip. And so we started out in Lincoln, picked you up at your house, if I'm remembering, and drove to Winemucca, four-hour drive to have breakfast. And as we got out of the car, Robert kind of scooted ahead, and Becky turned to me and she said, "He never shut up for four hours." But then she said, and this is the point, she said, "But it was interesting." She said, "I learned a lot." So, you know, I think about that and the time that I spent with you, too, but I have learned a lot. And one of the things I learned from watching you is that you came into office over a quarter century ago, which seems like forever, but you came in, Placer County, the cities were in the condition they were in at the time, and you built on that. So the groundwork that had been laid by the people that had come before you, you were able to build on. And then you did the most important thing a statesman can do, you improved upon it, and you've laid the groundwork going forward for the generations that come behind you to build on what you laid down. And I'm probably not going to say this ever again, but thank you. I really appreciate what you did for not only Placer County, but the cities in the counties. You've laid a groundwork that I think will serve the citizens of Placer County for decades and years to come going forward. So thank you.
You know, I had no idea when I came here that I would get such a fashionable hat. Keith Dietrich of the Gathering Inn. Fly fishing, some bourbon, and some cigars, I think, are in your future. I really enjoyed our conversations. A true measure of a leader is to leave something better than when they first got there, and I think you've done that. I mean, I'm just listening to the testimonials today. You have really made a positive impact in Placer County. You certainly made a positive impact for the issue of homelessness. I think, well, I know it's something that you care about. To give me, I don't know how many times we've met individually, 20 at least, to give me that kind of access to you, to have discussions with you about a very important issue, I think speaks to your willingness to both impart your wisdom, and you do talk a little bit, but you do let people talk when you're with them, so I do appreciate that. But I wanted to be here today just to thank you for your wisdom, also for your friendship, and I'm looking forward, after you are retired, to sitting down with some good bourbon and cigar and just have some good conversations. So, thank you very much, Robert.
We'll open it up to anyone else.
So, Robert, I really don't think there are any words that could express my gratitude to you for taking a chance on me and seeing my potential and putting up with my analness and my 4:00 a.m. texts and calls. And I just, you know, I want to tell you that you have truly become a best friend to me, and I will never fill your shoes, and I won't try, but I hope I do make you proud, and I'm going to come give you a hug now.
Any other members of the public or audience that would like to address the board? Or at least one supervisor on the board?
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Dave Brenninger, and my wife Linda and I are here, and we know many of you, and we've known, Robert, don't call me Bob, Weigant, for a long time. As I mentioned to you briefly at the beginning, one aspect I see, I think he would be very proud, Alex Ferreira. I remember he introduced me to you at a Lincoln Chamber of Governmental Relations meeting back in the early 90s, and he was very careful whom he picked for different functions. I think Primo is another good example, and there are many, many others. But at the time, he held the record for the longest number of years on this board, and you've elipsed that a great deal. But now you can go on someday when Primo decides he doesn't want to be there and go on the water board, and then you'll finally have enough years to go from there. Regarding water, both Alex and yourself, and Alex, I will have to say, was quite an influencer in all districts. I know, worked very carefully, and I know when Cindy was still with the Tahoe Utility District Engineering, we found ways to bring together a county over water issues that had not been brought together, even though the agency had been around for a long time. On the eastern slopes, they had need for water sureability, and on the western area out in your district, the same thing for the growers. There was particularly working with South Sutter Water District, the agency trying to find ways, how do we make sure when we can get water to the growers because it's their livelihood, and they need to know well in advance if things will be cut off or not, usually by April to May. And you played a pivotal role in hosting some meetings in those early times, and also with fire that we've heard here. Water plays a pretty important role for certain types of responses that they go to. And I noticed over the years, you also found good use for water. I think from time to time, I'd find you fishing up there by Hellhole Reservoir area or down by the Okpo Power Plant with that little private fishing group. I think Gray Allen was also there. Anyway, it's a real tribute to have known you, Robert, and you've done a great job. And one thing I can also think of as Fred was talking, I don't think there was a real name early on for what was to be preserved, and I believe that all of the coloring was purple. It became known as the Purple Map. No one knew what the color purple meant, but it must be important because it was coming by way of the County of Placer. So, to all of you, thank you for your service to the citizens of this great county, and, Robert, thank you very much. And Shanti, good luck to you.
Okay, Rich. You flew a long way to be here, so.
Well, same thing, Rich, it's okay to keep some secrets.
Well, I think both you and Mike are very worried right now. My name is Rich Gold. I'm the federal lobbyist in Washington for Placer County. I've been working with Robert for 26 years. I think it was Bismarck who said that politics is the art of the possible, and yet Robert spent all that time proving to us that what we thought wasn't possible actually could get done. And that is sorely what is missing in a lot of our politics today. So, Shanti, big shoes to fill, and those being part of the shoes you fill is making the impossible possible and bringing people together on common cause on incredibly difficult issues. You know, why not figure out clean water, we'll move on to endangered species, all of these things that divide us in Washington. You know, Robert and this board have gotten done over the last two or You know, Robert and this board have gotten done over the last two or two and a half decades. So I actually do have a gift for you today. You may not know this yet, but they are starting to cast the eight-episode version of your life or on HBO, and it's, I'm here to announce today that your role will be played by Kevin Costner, so congratulations.
Any others in the audience? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay, then we're going to bring it back up. Last call. Okay, yes.
So, Robert, you and I have chaired, you've chaired quite a few meetings that were some of the most challenging. And I remember being brand new as the clerk of the board, and we were up in Tahoe to hear Squaw and Martis, and it just felt like all the pressure and the weight of the world was sitting on our shoulders, and you, I remember someone called us out and said, "Really wish that you would put your cell phones down." And you said, "Well, but my clerk's back there, and I need her." And it sounds funny, and it was great, but it was that moment where you told me that you trusted me. And we went through a lot more meetings after that. And then your final year, you made sure that it was worse than all the years prior. And, but you will always be the chairman to me.
So well said. So I am going to read the resolution commending and thanking Robert, and then we'll go to some board comments. So, whereas, and a lot of whereas' is, maybe not as many as we had this morning, Janine, that was monumental, record-breaking, I think, but I wanted to read the resolution we've drafted for you. Whereas Supervisor Robert Weigant is a lifelong Placer County resident and a graduate of Lincoln High School, and whereas Supervisor Weigant briefly left Placer County to pursue higher education, earning a bachelor's and a master's degree in finance and management from the University of Southern California. I know, that one. Whereas Supervisor Robert Weigant began his public service at Placer County, where he joined the Economic Development Board. And whereas, in 1992 Supervisor Weigant was appointed by Supervisor Alex Ferrara to the Placer County Planning Commission representing District Two. And whereas Supervisor Weigant has served for 28 years on the Placer County Board of Supervisors from January 1995 through December 2022. And whereas Supervisor Weigant is the second-longest-serving supervisor in Placer County history, behind only his mentor, Alex Ferrer. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was one of the early leaders advancing a proactive implementation program for the open space and conservation element of the general plan, soon to be known as Placer Legacy. And whereas, in December of 1997, the Board of Supervisors directed county staff to begin the preparation of the Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program. And whereas, in June of 2000, Placer Legacy was adopted and the preparation of the Placer County Conservation Program, PCCP, began. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was the champion of the 20-year effort to bring the Placer County Conservation Program to implementation. And whereas Supervisor Weigant signed the PCCP implementing agreement establishing the start of the PCCP implementation on Earth Day, April 22, 2021. And whereas Supervisor Weigant has continually advocated for land conservation and has actively worked to support funding for Placer Land Trust, which has preserved over 12,300 acres of natural and agricultural land in Placer County since 1991. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was influential in establishing the former Sunset Area Plan in 1997 with the goal of protecting a large area as a site for economic development and job creation, which we moved forward today, another step. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was steadfast in his commitment to develop a lasting business partnership built on trust with the United Auburn Indian Community, UAIC, during their bid to develop Thunder Valley Casino in Lincoln, which has been a mutual success for Placer County and the UAIC. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was crucial in gathering support for the Lincoln Bypass, a thorough fare for Highway 65 that opened up in 2011, which improved regional connections between residential areas, employment centers, and major commercial centers in and around the city of Lincoln. And whereas Supervisor Weigant was instrumental in creating a master plan for the Placer County Government Center with the goal of creating a vibrant county center where residents could conveniently obtain services and conduct county business. And whereas Supervisor Weigant has emphasized prudent financial planning for several decades, including the creation and presentation of Weigant charts to the Board of Supervisors and the public. And whereas Supervisor Weigant has been a lifetime champion for Placer County as a place to live, work, and recreate. And whereas, during his 28 years on the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Weigant demonstrated integrity, patience, intelligence, and a collaborative spirit. And whereas, through his wisdom and leadership, great accomplishments were achieved, and he will forever be remembered as an iconic leader in Placer County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Placer County Board of Supervisors commends Robert Weigant for his exceptional and dedicated service to the people of Placer County and wishes him well in his retirement. May I have a motion? I'll second. Thank you, Supervisors Holmes and Gore. Before we vote, would you like to make any other comments?
Yeah, I tried not to get too emotional here. Robert, you and I have been together for 18 years, and what I have to say today is coming right from here. Had to lighten it up a little bit. So, Robert, you've been one of the most important leaders in the history of Placer County. I truly believe that. And I don't know if there's a Supervisor Hall of Fame, but if there is, I'll be the first one to nominate you. It was mentioned about Supervisor Alex Ferrera. He certainly knew what he was doing when he saw your potential as a leader, when he appointed you to the Placer County Economic Development Board, and then to the Placer County Planning Commission, and I feel that laid the foundation for your leadership and accomplishments during this last 28 years. You worked tirelessly on two major projects that took 20 years to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, the first being Placer Ranch, that the next 12 years will bring a California State University to Placer County. Your enduring legacy is the completion of the Placer County Conservation Plan, which prevents, protects development in western Placer County while also protecting our valuable open space and preserving our natural habitat. That is a masterful achievement and has been recognized by several federal and state agencies and will be enjoyed by generation after generation. Now let me talk about all the new buildings that have been built during your time on the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not going to mention them all, but here are a few. Larry Otto Finance Administration Building, Community Development Resource Center, Auburn Justice Center, Santucci Justice Center, the Animal Services Center, and many others, including the long-overdue Health and Human Services Center, which is under construction. There's one thing in common on all those buildings. The names on the plaques. Some have mine, some have current board members, some have former board members. The one thing in common is that your name is on every one of those plaques on those buildings, and I was just thinking about the other day when I was trying to think of my comments, and it's true. Every one of those buildings, from the Larry Otto Building now to the Future Health and Human Services, is on, their name is on those plaques. So, there's one more building needed in the Placer County Government Center, and that's the Placer County Administrative Center. And if I'm still around, I will strongly recommend to a future Board of Supervisors to name that building in honor of you, the Robert Weigant Placer County Government Center, Administrator Center, in your honor. And I think you've earned that, and I think you deserve that. It's been my great pleasure to serve you, with you for the past 18 years, and I wish you well on your retirement, and I know you'll be keeping busy, but I hope to see you on the trail. So thank you, and God bless you.
Supervisor Gore?
Thank you. Robert, I so appreciate your leadership, and I was thinking about the fact that I served here for four years, but really, I met you more than 15 years ago because you didn't just work on government things, you stepped up to help the Lincoln Lighthouse get established. And that was an opportunity for me as a young leader to step up and lead in an area that I was not comfortable with. But what I so appreciate was that you were willing to serve, and you were willing to serve especially in a financial capacity. You helped us with board financials and stuff that were a little bit beyond me at that time, and I so appreciated, number one, your willingness to serve because you were a busy county supervisor, but you shared your financial background to really support that nonprofit that is thriving today and doing so much to serve the residents of Lincoln, so thank you for that. And as I think about the last four years, like these last four years have probably been the hardest you've ever had as a supervisor. You have tried, you know, you've worked hard to do a lot of number, a number of things, but my goodness, we had the COVID year and the crazy year, and then this year of development. We, it, we made you work all the way to the finish line, and I'm glad about that, right? It is exciting. It is exciting that even today, we got to approve an item that you've been working on for years, to get business development in the Sunset Industrial Area. And look what we approved today. Opportunity for job creation and a balance of jobs and housing in our community, universities coming to Placer County, ideas that people might have thought about years ago actually have happened under your watch, with a lot of your input and direction, and so thank you. When I think about you as a leader, I think about you as a man who is insightful and thoughtful. You weigh the issues, and you are forward-thinking. And I just think that we have all benefited by how you have conducted yourself and how you have shared your knowledge. Your balanced approach has meant so much to me, and sometimes I know when I get frustrated, I go, "I know Robert has the right answer." And I'm going to look at Robert, and he's going to give a really good answer, which you do. So thank you for all that you've done to go before all of us. I feel like I have been so fortunate to sit in this role, and I have gotten an opportunity to vote on balanced budgets, and we have reserves, and we have opportunity in this county that most other counties can only dream of. And that is because of you and my colleagues here and who have gone before us, who have done such an excellent job in giving direction to our county. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Jones?
Well, Robert, since I'm the short-termer here, I've only been able to work with you, had the honor to work with you for two years, but I've told you this before, and I sincerely mean every bit of it, in that I respect you very much, and I really appreciate and I enjoy your very thoughtful, deliberative comments. As Bonnie said, you're kind of the, I don't want to say that you're the long-term knowledge, but you are very wise and you're very contemplative in your comments, and it's the one thing I've tried to learn from, not doing a very good job of it, but I just want to tell you, I really appreciate everything that you've done and how you've led the rest of us, and I wish you the very, very best wishes for your retirement, and go catch those fish. But when you get a marlin, you should come and let me know.
Karen, would you like to say a few words?
Robert, it's been a true privilege and an honor to work with you and for you in this current position. You know, the board's spent a lot of time on governance, and actually Suzanne captured the word I was thinking about when I think about what governance is with you. It's contemplative governance. It's, you contemplate about things, you think about them, and when you come out with your statements, it's so powerful, and I thank you for that. And I thank you for PCCP, which will serve as a gift for everyone.
Okay, Jane. And I think we have something that'll come up on the screen on this one.
Unlike many in this room and on this day, as I've only known Robert since 2019, and in that time, I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you and lending you many an unread book. But in my family tradition, there is no greater gift than a poem, and given that lineage is Irish, it's of course a limerick, so here goes. "Farewell to our soup from D2, our fisherman rancher who knew? With staff innovation and bold conservation, we balanced concerns as we grew. While Lincoln has long been his home, and many a stream does he roam, his humor and thought were always much sought, we'll so miss him here in this dome."
Well, being the chair, you get to go last, and so everybody has said so many wonderful things that I agree with, my counterparts, many of you in the public. Robert, I think I met you when I was working for Mike Flutie in 1989, and I think of all the things I've done since 1989, and you've been here, shepherding this county in a variety of roles that entire, that entire time, a lifetime, a career. Try not to get emotional, but it's hard. I think the biggest legacy that any of us give is to further the principles we believe in, in those surrounding us, and you've done that. You, we stand on your shoulders and on your efforts, and joining this board, I couldn't be more proud to carry on. The legacy, I can, I hope I can just do a little bit more to further that into the future, so thank you for that. Before I say anything else, I, we have a motion on the floor. I would like to call the motion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Now with that, we do have a video presentation, and then we have a couple other presentations too, Robert, so stay tuned.
It's been such a long and exciting road, and it's such a fast pace. I do wonder what it's going to feel like. I had my last meeting in Lake Tahoe, I had my last city-county dinner, I probably walked precincts for the last time, and I thought about that, but it felt good, so I think I'm definitely ready to do something different.
I'm excited for him to be able to take a step back and do the things that he has always wished he had more time for. I know he's going to miss, I can't imagine my dad without Placer County attached to it in some way. This county is his love, you know, so.
I'm going to miss knocking on his door and saying, "Can I have a minute?", and an hour later leaving his office, because there are so many stories and so
Because there are so many stories and so much wisdom in his stories about the legacy of Placer County.
He was always the constant. He was the one that was there that kept us all together and kept things moving forward. And that's very important for the history of Placer County.
First time he ran, I was in high school. You know, I specifically remember getting the "Elect Robert Wiegant" T-shirts and handing them out to all my buddies. And we'd have precinct walk days and, and things like that.
He won every time he ran, and he won by very significant margins, which is unheard of.
I think Don Lunsford at one point said that we should run him as a bond because he was getting more than two-thirds of the vote every time.
Well, when I got to know Robert, he was Planning Commissioner Wiegant. And it was right at the time that the county was starting a general plan update. And the timing was really good to get someone to come in from that district where a lot of growth issues were going to become apparent.
I ran on the notion of balanced and well-planned growth. So, I had two focuses. One was economic development, jobs creation, and quality growth that was fiscally responsible but also environmentally sensitive. So, when we had the chance to start Placer Legacy and the Conservation Plan, it just plugged into that vision perfectly.
No doubt, Robert's biggest legacy to me is looking at conservation in a holistic manner. And to be the first county, I believe in the nation, to adopt a plan as comprehensive is just really a landmark for every citizen of Placer County. That also opened up opportunities for economic development. And they come hand in hand. You can't take care of the environment if you don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. So, he built our economic strength while protecting our environment. And that, that truly is a gift he's given and left all of us.
The Conservation Plan took eighteen years from start to finish, and that wouldn't have happened if he didn't have that longevity in office. But that goes back to, you have to do a good job in order to stay in office, and he, he did a great job.
And that was part of Robert's legacy. That'll go on generation after generation for people to enjoy the quality of life we have in Placer County.
We were working with so many incredibly talented people that were so committed that it was hard just not to keep, keep trying.
If Robert hadn't been the supervisor, if he hadn't done the one more term, I don't know that we would have actually pushed it across the finish line.
Not only what he did with Placer Legacy and the PCZP, but it's what he did with the general plan and many of the community plans.
When we talk about the Sunset Industrial Area and Robert's role in that, I don't think people understand the role that Robert actually played going back to the general plan update. Robert was on the Planning Commission.
He saw that for the South Placer area to flourish, that it was, could not be all houses. So, I think the driving motivating factor for him was to set aside a space that would provide jobs.
It's a hopeful look into the future. Obviously, with Placer Ranch now coming online, that's another new catalyst for change. And if the university locates itself out there, we won't recognize the place in twenty years.
These things do take time in government. We're not a quick fix business most of the time. And the vision things take time to, to build and nurture and, and communicate and get set in place. So, seeing all that come together after all those years, it's almost like living a dream, I think.
So, the casino coming to town, that was really quite something. Originally, they were looking at, at locating up here in the Newcastle area. They wanted, right there off the freeway in Newcastle, it just wasn't right. And, and Robert, in his very pragmatic way, said, "Okay, let's, you know, let's find a place where we can make this work." And so, he was the one who, working with the tribe, got them to, to look at the, our Sunset Industrial Area and, and come up with a governance structure and all that good stuff.
The, the public should know is that when you go into public service, particularly as an elected, a lot of what happens will be completely unexpected. There'll be things that come across your desk that you could have never guessed. And that was the casino for me. That was the big one.
That agreement, which was really Robert's baby, so to speak, was, and still is, the, the framework for everything in the relationship between the tribe and the county. Historically, tribes and local governments were always at each other's throats. And there were turf disputes and, but I think Robert saw the potential in changing that dynamic.
The county has received huge amounts of public benefit, even tax dollars per se, in lieu of tax dollars that we wouldn't have gotten had we not had the agreement. In addition to that, they've been a, a great partner in local projects. They are co-funding with us the first two miles of the Placer Parkway. Before that, they lent us the last increment we needed for the Sunset Interchange. What allowed that to happen was that we were all on a level playing field in, in having to live with each other.
But it took not only long-term vision and planning, but some courage for Robert because he had to stand up to a lot of his peers who felt exactly the opposite about this. And he did that.
Robert is one of those unique politicians that has figured out how to, how to disagree without being disagreeable.
I would describe Robert's leadership style as approachable. I think he has that natural innate skill that people will look to him for a direction.
So, he's cautious, he's, he's common, he has common sense, he has a good approach. He tries to listen to everybody.
I hope that each supervisor from here on out kind of grows on his vision.
He has been doing this for twenty-eight years for all the right reasons. He wants to make Placer County a better place. And so, he has really given me the blessing of setting me up for the opportunity to kind of continue.
I'm anxious to see her, how her style comes together. Yeah, I'm completely confident that she will more than fill my shoes.
No, oh no. You know, Robert and I are so different. I don't think I ever could fill his shoes. But, but I do hope I make him proud, and I hope that, you know, he can look at me and see some of his mentorship through me and as I serve on the Board.
I'll miss working on the really big things with really good staff and other people in the community. But I want to stay engaged in the community at some level, and I definitely want to, want to spend a lot more time with my grandkids and my kids. A couple of the grandkids, I think, might be stupid enough like me to want to work hard on a farm for no pay. So, if I can convince them that's the right thing to do, then that, that'll just be really fun.
Selfishly, I, 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 I want all of them back. You know? He's given up so much of his life for, for Placer County, and it's our turn.
Everyone knows that Robert loves fly fishing. And I've been thinking about how analogous that is to being a supervisor and a good supervisor. Because you have a lot of failures, but you have to be patient and persistent and adaptive in order to be a successful fly fisherman, which I understand he is, or so he tells me. He certainly is successful as a supervisor. And I've witnessed that firsthand because he is patient and persistent and adaptive.
I'm just honored to know him, and I am so glad that he got to be a supervisor for as long as we, as he has because for somebody like me that lives in Placer County, I get to reap the benefits of that.
Just want to thank him for those thirty years of service to the county.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for making me a better supervisor.
He is an incredibly unique supervisor, and I don't think we will ever have anyone again like him on the Board of Supervisors.
And so, with that, I have to allow Robert to say a few remarks. So, do you, do you have a minute or two?
I know it'd be unusually stupid right now, so I actually thought I'd take a couple of notes to, to guide me. So, first of all, I'd thank you all so very much. I know everybody exaggerated things, my positive side, but I don't really care right now because I'm gonna leave all of it. We all know how strange my mind is, but I can assure you honestly that as long as I'm reasonably clear-headed, I'll remember this moment every day for the rest of my life. So, last few months, Jane and I have been laughing about my last here at the county. And so, one time, I think it was, this is my last first meeting in October, a couple of months ago. And it's my last lunch during closed session. And the most compelling thing, I think, today is that if I play my cards properly, today is the last day that I'll iron a shirt. I'm looking forward, forward to that part. So, first, I just want to thank everyone here and others for the tremendous opportunity for being able to celebrate this career. And if you're in this line of business, that means you have to thank the voters for giving you a shot. I've worked with some amazing staff and colleagues that have also been very hopeful, helpful. I said the other day that I'm sure public service really epitomizes a team sport. Nobody does anything by themselves in this business. And I read in a book that I actually finished, Jane, the notion that in an elected position, there are times when it really comes down to kind of role-playing. So, part of the business, and I think one of my opportunities, was to see where at times I would just plug into a set of circumstances and, and really rely on the heavy lifting that was done by others. So, sometimes I might get mad, or sometimes I might act like I was mad and I really wasn't mad, or sometimes I might act like I was liking somebody and I might have despised them. But, but I, but I did try to do that, and, and I think it, it was helpful. So, a good friend of mine recently said that I should prepare some thoughts as to why I think things have been successful as they are. And he's a very bright analytical mind with an incredible success record in, in making choices, picking stocks, portfolio manager, college friend of mine. And he is, over the years, we used to argue a lot about politics and a lot of things I was trying to do because he's a real lean and mean government type of guy. Thinks the government oftentimes just gets too big too quickly. But over the years, he started acknowledging our success and then became someone who actually paid attention to it. He even bought property in Placer County at North Star for a while. So, he recommended that I just try to make a few notes about what I think made us all so successful here over all these years. So, it's, one of them is the things that have been mentioned today is a thing that was mentioned, and that is, when I came here, the people who were before me gave me a tremendous place to start, an incredible foundation to build upon, and, and, and they expected people like me to, to continue the good work. But Alex Ferrer in particular, who, who talked me into giving this job a try, and Bob Mahan, Terry Cook, Mike Lee, who's still on the Water Agency, Larry Suderson, who's a close personal friend. So, you know, I tried to remember that as I went forward. But I think here in Placer County, if there's a formula at all, it, we talked about this a little bit today, it's that you actually have to have pretty remarkable staff. And so, it's important to talk about hiring, attracting the best and the brightest. And I think we've tried to put in place policies that did that. And oftentimes, I was smart enough just to figure out who those people were and attach myself to them and hope that I could get some success from their work. Another element, I think, is not only with the colleagues that I've served with, I think there've been fifteen different Board members that I've worked with who are all elected. So, the role of an elected is different, of course, than the role of a staff. But part of that is, I think, a lot these days about the founder's vision, which is, we have a representative form of government that is democratically elected. Exactly a democracy, but, but what that means is, is that it's a double-edged sword. We get hired by people's votes if we can convince them to give us a shot. And, and then, we're supposed to use our best judgment and skillsets to do the best job we can, even if they disagree with it. And I assure you, over twenty-eight years, there'll be a lot of people who voted for you with whom you end up disagreeing and they with you, and sometimes it's pretty vehement. But that is the representative form of government. And I've served with people here, but also city council members that in Placer County, I think by and large, we've really had a cadre of people who, who understood that and excelled at that. Primo will oftentimes refer to a mentor of ours who was a city council member in Rockland. I decided today I wasn't gonna name any names because, because I forget people, and so I wasn't gonna do that. But, but that's, that's critical. And then I think at the local level in government, if you like entrepreneurialism and, and study those kinds of things, and of course, my educational background is in business and finance, at the local level, it's the place to be. If that's what's gonna give you personal reward. At local level, even as a conservative, I think you're entitled to really try anything you like. And Jane mentioned this this morning, but for, for the things at which we're successful at the local level, there are thirty-seven hundred-ish counties across the country that if they're successful, they'll be replicated by, by others. And if they aren't successful, they won't destroy everything across the whole country. It'll only be in one county where that mistake was made. So, I encourage everybody to, to attract that kind of mind thought, both at the staff level and in the people they elect. But the model here for me was Placer Model of Health and Human Services. And I had nothing, I made no contribution to that idea whatsoever. There was a staffer at the time, Ray Mers, who had a particular vision that was simple in concept, and he worked hard to get support for it. And he was given the chance to do that. And there have been many things that have followed, and it gave me a template by which to do that. And then I think one of the things that has been strong in Placer County as a part of our culture, and Fred was one who was an example of this for me when I was on the Planning Commission, and that's a sincere and genuinely committed effort to seek public input, to hold yourself out there and be willing to take criticisms, but welcome the community in. And then if you make a decision where fifty percent of them in the room hate your guts, then you, you still do that, but at least you got that feedback and you explained why you did something differently. And it's a part of our culture. There'll be people who come to our meetings and ask us why they didn't have a chance to comment after we spent thousands of dollars reaching out to them. But, but we do welcome that here, and I, I think those are the kinds of things that will, will serve us well. So, as I look back, I am so pleased that I had a chance to be a part of some really big efforts that I think set an example and will serve us well going forward. There won't be any shortage of challenges or opportunities on things like forest management and homelessness. But I want to welcome Shanti to the Board. It's clear in a lot of ways that it's time to turn over to a new generation of leadership. And I think her accomplishment in the election was actually quite stunning when you think about what she did do in terms of getting elected with a huge margin and an opportunity to, to stand up here and express her own ideas and notions. And I'm very comfortable that the county is so well-positioned with the people And, and I'm very comfortable that the county is so well-positioned with the people that are up here and with Shanti coming on. And I'll be paying attention from the sideline. But I mostly, again, want to thank you all for the opportunity and, and the contribution that you helped me with in an effort to, to make this county an amazing place. When Primo and I were growing up here, no one could have envisioned the kinds of changes that would occur. And they could have been, they could have been horrible in, in the demand for growth, but, but in fact, they, they weren't. They really set a standard, I'm sure, in the country. And I think if we adhere to some basic principles and stay engaged and work hard, our future is going to be really, really bright. So thanks.
Robert, will you join us down front? Will you join us down front?
Have to go down here again?
Yes. Yours is almost as big. Almost as big as the one we did earlier. So for those of you who don't know, those are all supervisors that have served over 20 years in longevity with Placer County. And we just added Robert to that photo. Right, right, maybe writing in front of, or is it heavy?
It's heavy.
Okay, got it.
A little bit at odds here.
So since we're all here, I'm gonna share a quick story. Some months ago, somebody came in a car, said something, longest serving, are you gonna be the longest-serving supervisor? No, I don't think so. So we knew this was out here, so we came out and looked at it, and I started counting through the numbers and pretty early on, I said, I don't know, there's somebody who's like in the 30-year range. And then I, oh wow, this person looks like they died in office. It wasn't an equal four-year contract, and I'm not gonna be that person.
So we have now a group activity. And that is, I think the IT specialists have a song that will conclude the meeting with. And we want everyone to sing along. Some of you are too young to know it, but the rest of us, old people, know it. We're waiting. Megan? Megan? Help us, Megan.